Hi, good afternoon and welcome to the Deerfield Select Board Board of Health Meeting for August 19th, 2020. We're starting a little bit late due to technical difficulties. Common occurrence, which is 5:10 PM. So we're meeting in the main meeting room at municipal offices at 8 Conway Street, South Deerfield, Mass. Meetings normally held at the municipal offices are being held remotely with adequate alternative means of public access and where required, public participation provided in accordance with the Governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Broadcast on Frontier Community Access Television, FCAP. Remote meeting connections noted below. Sounds like we have Carolyn. So you can join the meeting on our link. If you go to our homepage, you can look at our agenda and click on the link for Zoom. I'm not going to read all those letters and numbers. Or you can call in. You can dial in 1-312-626-6799. And then our meeting ID is 952-2899-6363. And then you'll be prompted for the passcode, which is 127247. You can also, you know, there's a bunch of telephone numbers depending on where you are. You can use a 1-800 number. There's all different ways to sign in. Or you can just sign in, you know, using your laptop or, you know, mobile device using the Zoom app. So, meeting attendees should mute their phones. You can star six for landlines unless asking a question or commenting. That mutes your phone and also unmutes your phone if you want to ask a question. All attendees should wait to speak until other participants are finished. There's usually a lot of lag with these meetings, so just wait till people are done and then just state who you are and speak clearly. And so our agenda today, I call this meeting to order. I'm going to chair the meeting tonight. Dave is here and Carolyn's on the line and Casey's remote and we have other people remote. So I'll call the meeting to order. We have no hearings or appearances today. We're really here, we just wanted to meet, this wasn't a typical night for our meeting, but we wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, our reopening plans and some COVID updates and different policies, personnel policies as they relate to COVID-19. And I know Casey will fill us in on a bit of that. Are there any Select Board, you know, announcements or Board of Health announcements right off the bat? Or do you want to just get into the items? Go ahead, Dave.
I think as a board and as a town, I offer our condolences to Bruce Hunter.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
...who has been a great asset to the town. And he disagreed with people. He always listened. And, you know, it's servants like that that helped this town grow the way it has grown. So, reaching out to his family, I know there's no services scheduled for him, but we wish the family the best. Our sincere condolences on Bruce Hunter.
Yeah, thank you. I know that there was a mention in the obituary that if people wanted to donate in honor of him to the hospice, local hospice, that would be greatly appreciated. Bruce was an amazing talent. He had many, many years in public service, working for the FERCOG and managing large projects. And he just had a way with understanding how larger projects would happen. And he served many years on our Finance Committee and was on our Building Advisory Committee, chairing that or co-chairing that with Julie Chalfont. It was a shock to see that in the paper and we're all very sorry. Again, we offer our condolences to his family and we really appreciate every bit of service he gave to the town on many different aspects that we worked on. Let's see. A couple other things just to hit on real quick is, you know, I've been watching.
Travis, I just want to add that we're going to really miss his expertise.
Yes.
He was helping us on the building committee so much.
Yep.
And it was really, really important.
He did. He had a way to understand large projects to make them a little simpler and, you know, he really knew how to deal with, you know, with all the different aspects of engineering and, you know, how to manage a big project like that. He had had so much experience and we're definitely at a loss without him, for sure. I just wanted to hit on real quick, we have, we've installed the large Dropbox out front in the lobby. A lot of people are asking about ballots. So for a special election is coming up on September 1st for the primary, for in-state primary for, you know, House and Senate. And so, you know, originally we had the smaller Dropbox attached to the police department wall when you first came into the right. And that could handle ballots, but we assume that we'll be getting a lot more ballots. So it's taken us a little while because we keep getting them in damage, but we finally have in our large, installed our large Dropbox, which could handle all of, probably all of the ballots at once. It's pretty large. So, and that's right when you come in the door and there's signage there. And so anybody that wants to, that has asked for a mail-in ballot, has filled it out, wants to come and drop it off. We know that Saturday and Sunday we'll start the in-person early voting for that primary. And there'll be some times the following week and the following weekend, but you can always drop it off, you know, just fill it out. You can mail it in if you want to mail it in, but if you're concerned about how long it would take in the mail and you want to be sure that it gets to us, you're more than welcome to drive down and walk in the front lobby there and you'll see the giant box. You can just drop it right in there. It has a ballot sign on it and so ready to go there. That's all set for you. So, so I get, really the main issue today was to talk a little bit about our reopening plans as they relate to COVID. We have, I have a Select Board meeting. I think we're all going to stay here for, or most of us are going to stay here for, at 7 o'clock tonight. It's a school committee meeting, sorry, at 7 o'clock. And, you know, that plan, the reopening plan evolves on that as we negotiate with the staff and try to think about holidays and who's coming back and what do we have for testing and making sure we have all the security in place. And so, that's been an evolving, rolling target. And we think that's probably going to roll out a little slower than we were thinking in the beginning, but it's all for the safety of our staff and our children. So it's understandable and Darius is doing a great job with his staff. They're all doing an amazing job trying to get, you know, get that plan up and running for remote and for hybrid. So we'll have some more information about that and some finance stuff on the school, Deerfield Elementary. I think Frontier was last night, Waitlese was the night before, and there were some other nights where the other towns. So really this kind of ties in a little bit with that and ties in with our opening for early voting, you know, the elections. By law, we need to be open to allow people to come in and have free access to their polls. And so we've developed, Barb has developed a plan and working with Casey and the department heads and how we're going to do that and how we're going to handle, you know, keeping the town safe, the buildings safe and the traffic flow. So I think maybe I would turn it over to Casey to maybe just fill us in a bit on where you're at with that. And I know you've given us a plan to look over and do you want to, do you want to hit on the highlights of that, Casey?
Sure. Okay. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen.
Oh, nice.
Which is kind of messy because I downloaded a lot of stuff today.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Um, I hope. Ah, it's not letting me do it. For some reason it won't let me do it. Oh, maybe.
There it is.
Can you see it?
Yep, yep, there it is.
All right. So what we did, and I had worked with Dick on this for quite a bit, and basically there were a couple of elements that we needed to cover. Because COVID is continuing to evolve and it's, we have to deal with employment issues. Folks at home have issues that they need us to be aware of, so, that are employees. And we want to make the public aware of how we're handling things right now. So we created this plan and I have to say, one of my colleagues, a very nice person from Lexington, shared his plan and I used his as a baseline and made some changes, you know, added some stuff, refined the appendices, which include policies and will include other plans for other departments and programs. But really created, I think, a working document. And so I'll start at the top. The purpose is to, we recognize that employees coming back to the workplace in this situation face unusual circumstances and so do visitors. So we have to be careful to protect the public health and safety. I reference the reopening phases in Massachusetts. And right now we're in Phase 3, Step 1, I think, Carolyn. And then I tell everybody to check through the state's coronavirus website. And at the end of the main section of the plan, there's references to links that people can use to find that information. Karen, or Carolyn, can you mute yourself? Oh, maybe it's not you. Maybe it's somebody else. Somebody needs to mute themselves. Star six.
Okay.
All right. So we go through definitions first, and that's hand washing, symptom sex.
You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
I had to mute them, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm pretty sure I'm unmuted. I mean, I wasn't muted.
Yeah, you're muted.
I'm unmuted now.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So basically we go through a series of definitions. What does it mean to do this? Be vigilant for symptoms. What is social distancing? What is hand washing? Face covering, use of gloves, and there are exceptions to face covering. So we note that very briefly. And this is basically for the municipal offices and regular programming that we've pushed out or connected with people in the offices, the main office. The police department, South County EMS, Recreation Department, libraries, senior center, they all have different protocols and different requirements. So I'm going to ask them to do separate plans so that they can identify those specific things that they need to do to make sure that they're complying with all of the nuances that come from their spaces or programming.
Right.
Because, for instance, the rec department needs to intersect with the programming requirements that DPH has for athletics. So this is, this is sort of the bent. But we go through the protocols, the workplace safety protocols is the next section after definitions. And it's somewhat a regurgitation of the stuff that we've learned through the public eye about how we're supposed to be taking care of ourselves in the workplace and out. It does, we go over social distancing guidelines, facility considerations about particularly where we're having items delivered because we're all ordering from Amazon. Because we need face masks. And then we do go through a section where it says wellness and self-certification of symptoms. And that's for employees and visitors. Because we have an expectation to protect the employees, but also if we're moving into a certain type of reopening phase, that expectation changes when we add visitors to the mix. So then we move into references. You'll start to see references as you get to page nine for a self-certification form. So where employees actually certify that they're, that they're healthy and they haven't had a contact. And that's Appendix A. We have exposure guidance in Appendix C. We have leave and travel guidance in Appendix D. And so there, those are specific items that outline how we will handle employee questions and/or employee requests or situations. And those are the key pieces of guidance that we need to push out to employees now because there have been a couple instances where we've had contacts and we need to refine how we're handling everyone's understanding of this. So this, this third area after leave and travel guidance, you'll see it says phase reopening. And I'm hoping everybody can see my screen that is sitting in the audience. Basically, we're working through our ability to connect with, to connect with visitors as employees and still maintain health and public safety for everyone. So I've identified, as I said before, residents are encouraged to use, to utilize the town's website for online resources to conduct business. Almost all of our business has been pushed out to the website. You can buy your transfer station sticker. You can register your dog. You can do, you can send us comments and questions. You can find updated information about how we're going to handle certain activities and programming. So we recommend that everybody use that platform or give us a call and ask us if you have a question. We are working, we're just not open to the public because we're trying to limit that contact. But as I said a little bit earlier, there are sections like emergency services, elections, public work, recreation, South County Senior Center, Hilton Library. All those facilities and programming have specific guidelines. And so the department has no best how they need to handle their spaces. So what I, what I'm going to ask, and I, a couple of months ago I sent them an email and said, hey, think about this. But I didn't really have a good refined idea of how we were going to do this. So in this section, the page that I'm looking at is page 10. It basically says that these specific areas need to address the specific guidance and concerns that go with their programming or service. And so they will provide, I will ask them to provide their plan in an appendix that we will attach. Particularly library and senior center because they do have specific protocols and concerns. You have, the elderly population rotates through those two facilities for programming. And so there's, there have been concerns throughout my CEO calls about how to handle that. And I looked on the governor's website and there's some guidance that's just been posted for libraries. So I think we can expect to hear from Candace once she, once I tell her that I have a draft that I want everybody to address. And so, and then, and so then I break down phases and I break them down as A, B, C, D, E. Phase A, and we're really in Phase A at this point, it's just not formalized. Most staff are returned to work either in staggered spaces or at staggered hours. And that's really dependent on the workflow and what the situation is in the office because we still have to maintain the occupancy rates that the governor has identified as required. We then have Phase B, which are town facilities reopen for appointments only. And at this point, actively with certain programming like, or certain requirements like licensing and permits, we have started following this type of a guidance idea. So if someone needs to pick something up and they need to actually speak to somebody, we meet them at a specific time. I know the town clerk's been doing this for specific things like swearing someone in or marriage intentions because the state requirements maintain that you have to have a physical interaction. You have to see somebody signing something or taking an oath. So it, it really falls down to, our phase right now is between B and, it's between A and B. But for specific things that we have statutory requirements, we had to make adjustments so that we could meet people safely, so that we could take in paperwork or facilitate them getting through paperwork that's official. And then Phase C is, I'm sorry, Phase C, Phase B is open for appointments only. And this piece, we still have to maintain all our safety protocols. Curbside services should still be utilized. So if we're leaving documents for someone to come pick up or sign, that we don't have to have a contact, that's what, that's what we can do. Phase C is when we would open with reduced hours and limited capacity. And I have some information to flesh into that, that I found very late today. And then Phase D would be when we open with regular hours, but under specific safety protocols. And Phase E is open to the public with no restrictions. And so, following the governor's guidelines, we're nowhere near being in the last two phases of the, even Phase 3. And then the next section is additional information. And so I've created links for people to use, once this is published, to get to other information, general information, gathering information, travel information that's been published through the, through DPH or through the governor's office citing specific information. The next section is appendices. And so we have the employee self-certification form. We have instructional videos. So one of the things about reopening, one of those requirements is making sure that people have access to training so they know they're properly handling things. And there, one of my colleagues mentioned, hey, there's videos out there. And it is an allowable practice to ask people to watch the videos and just confirm that they watched them and then monitor to make sure everything is being cleaned and disinfected properly. And this will become very apparent when we open for early voting, which happens later this week. Appendix C, and so this is, these are, Appendix C is a key piece of information that I need the board to address because this is the one that includes guidelines for leave due to exposure, illness, or childcare. And the scope of that, the purpose is to mitigate the issues we're all running into. The scope of it is it applies to all town employees that don't have a conflict or a collective bargaining agreement. And it outlines contact with employees and reporting to work. So we outline how we're going to handle somebody calling in and saying, hey, I had an exposure or, hey, I've tested positive. How do we handle that? So we refine that and say, an employee is instructed to contact me, the town administrator, who will consult with a Board of Health agent or other health personnel and determine how to handle a contact issue where someone thinks they've been exposed. And then we have to decide how we're going to deal with that, how, testing and that sort of thing. And that follows the MDPH protocol. Then we have to create the leave arrangement. So if someone's tested positive but can work remotely, then we can put that into place if we have the ability to do that, which we, at this point, are building our resources to do that. So we're investing in technology so that we can create that. If there's an issue where you have an employee who has to stay home for childcare, this appendix, Appendix C, defines that. Then we have work from home requests. If somebody doesn't feel safe in the workplace, how are we going to handle that? So if that, if a person requires or requests a remote work accommodation, then we can say, okay, these are the reasons we would give an accommodation. An employee tests positive. An employee comes in close contact with somebody who's infected. An employee comes in contact with someone who may have had a distant contact, though a third-party contact. An employee who's required to stay at home because of school or a school, school or daycare issue. Or an employee who's required to provide care for a family member. So this section gives you a reason for the request and then it tells you how we're going to handle it. And so in this case, an approval or disapproval would be, employees are not guaranteed requests for remote work as certain positions cannot be performed remotely. So we, will, the town administrator can work, can refer to the job duties, work with the supervisor and determine how to make an accommodation. Also, employees may not be granted permission to remote work, to remote work if, if there's an, if there's something that needed, needs to be done and that's safe to that, for that person to be in. And then requirements for working remotely, we define what that looks like. So you have to maintain contact with your supervisor or the town administrator. You have to complete your assignment. You have to meet all your deadlines and notify us if there's an issue. And then if that person's unable to perform the work, then we have to go back and figure out how we make adjustments. And then we also mentioned flexible work hours, which we had mentioned in a, in a previous policy. Because flexing time at home to deal with, with other issues can be a useful way to make sure that tasks are still getting completed. And so what we say here is, an employee can start work early, reduce the lunch schedule or work late. But we also say that flex time shall not result in overtime, that employee schedules shall not be adjusted to begin earlier than seven or later than six. And we could change that time. It's actually highlighted in case we wanted to change that time. But we also create a request to do that flexible work option so that we can track and keep records in case the auditors have a question or in case there are other questions that come up. We mentioned the fact that we need to be able to make reasonable accommodations. And this is similar to how we would make reasonable accommodations for an ADA request. So to the extent that employees require an accommodation, they can file a request and we'll review it. We'll try to, that needs to be an interactive process. So how can we adjust what you're doing so that you can work remotely? Are there training modules that you can take so that you can be working remotely and maintaining what your qualifications would be or what necessary, necessary training? You may not have performed the last week or so, but if we could fit it into that schedule and give an allowance or an accommodation, that makes it easier for everybody to get the work done because some of these trainings you have to complete. I know there's a lot of highway trainings that are required over a period of time that the training modules themselves have switched to a remote access platform. Like today I had a training module for procurement and they've moved everything to a remote platform, but it's still an all-day thing. So those types of accommodations we outline. We also refine some of the understanding around the Families First Coronavirus Response Act leave because there's no questions about that. And we address the telecommute, traveling and telecommuting measures, any return to work issues that may need to be addressed after somebody comes back from a flex work schedule or for another reason. And then we actually hit hygiene rules when you're at home because it's important to remember that we need to practice those at home as well as at work. So Appendix D is also the out-of-state travel policy. This is the next one that we needed to address because we're in vacation season and people are traveling.
Hang on, Casey.
And so refining this makes it easier for employees to understand what the expectation is. And it also allows us a guidance document that we can quickly refer to and say, okay, here's what you need to do if you have a question.
Can you hear us?
Let's work that out as an employer, manager, supervisor, and the employee.
Can you hear us at all?
So in this, in this section, we have the purpose, the scope. We actually mentioned the same thing that the governor did. There's lower-risk states to go to that may, that may make it easier for someone to travel just to get away for a few days because goodness knows we need a break. And then we reiterate the stay-at-home requirements for employees who return from a low-risk state or exceptions for stay-at-home requirements if there's necessary, you know, if you've got somebody who comes back from a low-risk state, then we might not have an issue. We address if somebody has been to a high-risk state, how we're going to handle that. And since it happened to me once, I think it makes it easier if everybody can just refer to this. And then the rest of these appendices, so Appendix E is the vacation request form. And I think I'm missing one appendix, which is, was referenced a little bit earlier. But you see the gist of it as I'm scrolling through is that it's really to provide guidance to the employees and to provide guidance to the supervisors as to how we're going to handle these things. Because this continues to be something that we're in a, in a pattern of, hold on, we're not sure what's going to go on, especially if we're worried about any uptick that might happen in the fall. So having these policies in place that we can measurably change if necessary, but that gives us leeway for interpretation, but a guidance document really, is a good place for us all to be. Is that, does that make sense?
We can't tell you.
There we go.
Can you hear us?
She can't. She put us on mute.
You can't hear us.
We can't hear us because you put us on mute.
I just want to say.
The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six.
And I also want to remind people that the whole time that the town hall has been closed, our expectations have been that people take extra precautions and that they protect each other in the work situation and at home. So we've been asking our employees all along to do extra behavior and have extra limitations on them. And this is star up.
on them, and this is our opportunity to formalize that, because, um, we actually just don't have a choice. We have, we're, you know, moving along now, and we need to have it formalized. I know you had a Trevor, a question, Trevor, sorry.
No, that's okay, we were on mute, so, Dave actually had a question.
The, uh, just for point of interest, on the Family First, uh, with that 80 hours, that's for a calendar year, that's not for each incident, right?
It's for a calendar year, yes.
Okay, I think we have to spell that out, because some people are going to interpret her incident.
Okay. So that's a good thing for me to make an adjustment on, I will, um, I don't have the Word document in front of me, but I can make that adjustment.
Okay. Does anyone know what's hard to get tried?
Yes, and that's.
That's in the private industry, but not in the town, so.
Okay. Yes, it is in a calendar year, and the reason I know that is because I had a question about it myself.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I, as we were going through, like I said, I had a pretty busy day.
So, I have one.
So if I clarify that, it, it's in a calendar year, does that satisfy the question?
Yes.
That I could make change?
Yeah, for me.
Okay.
So, and the vacation thing, uh, when people go away on vacation, say they want to head down to Florida for two weeks, um, when they come back, they can't come into, they may not be able to do their job, say they drive a plow truck, it's in the middle of summer, I mean, middle of winter, um, they can't really work from remote, so, um, it, it would make sense not to go away to Florida, we're not going to deny somebody that, but when you come back, you can't come back to work for 14 days, so that's really a month off, and, um, they aren't, obviously aren't getting paid for those two weeks.
Or they use, and so, this is the thing, they can choose to use their own time if they have it.
Correct.
To do that quarantine.
Yep.
And one thing, a, and so that's what we were trying to do, is identify, identify solutions, so people, we don't have to answer the question 15 times.
Right.
But yes, when you go away and come back, um, in order to get back into the workplace right now, if I understand it correctly, we have to have, uh, you have to have a COVID-19 negative test.
Yep.
And then you can come back, because that's the state travel advisory, I would say we would need to follow that anyway.
Correct. I agree.
We've identified.
Yep.
And then, if you do come back from a hotspot, you need to understand that if you cannot work remotely, and there are a few things you can do.
Sure.
To assist with the work remote for certain disciplines, or certain departments, there's training things that can be done. But you also have to accept the fact that if you make that choice, that you may have to use more of your time than you wanted to.
Right. I just want to make sure it's clear that employees, if they decide to take off and go to a hotspot or somewhere that's not in the state's requirement, that, um, you know, they don't get to go on vacation for two weeks and then come home and sit home and get paid for two weeks. That's not how it works, so I just want to make sure that that's completely clear.
Yeah, so, in Appendix D, we say that in the reentry into the workplace section. Before reentering the workplace after the 14-day stay-at-home period, such employees may be required to submit a COVID-19 test, have his/her temperature read, and/or answer questions designed to determine whether he or she is experiencing COVID-19 symptoms.
Yep. Okay.
So employees turning to the Commonwealth and the, the section above that in this Appendix D.
Yep, that's what I'm reading.
It says, we have to produce a test, a negative test, and that's the same, like I said, that's the same requirement that the governor has.
Right, exactly, that's perfect. I mean, if they can come back and produce a test that they're negative, that's fine. Um, it's just you need a little bit of time from that travel and the negative test, right?
Right.
Am I right about that? Yeah, like a day or two or something?
Three to five days.
Yeah, so you come back.
Or you, I think the, so Carolyn, can I ask a question?
Maybe Carolyn could answer that.
I think the guide says, you have to produce a negative COVID test within 72 hours of entering the state?
Um, Casey, what's really important here is, the incubation period is, on the average, five days. So, we, we do not want to test before five to seven days. So, if a person is coming from Florida, they're going to have to be, uh, and they took an airplane, then they are going to have to wait to get a negative COVID test five to seven days from the time that they flew back into Massachusetts.
Right.
Because otherwise, those tests are not worth it. You're not getting accurate, um, opportunity.
It seems like in Appendix D under Section 5, we would need to kind of add a bulletin, and maybe it's here somewhere, where, um, we would need a test taken, um, no sooner than five days, and then.
Right.
And then it, and, and then we'd have to get that test within 72 hours of taking that test, so, um, just so we know.
What it appears to be, the standard, is five to seven days. So, for us, no sooner than five to seven days.
Right.
Is what the window.
Yep, so maybe if we add that.
Um, we want to put in.
So no sooner than five to seven days upon return to the state?
Yes.
Upon the last potential exposure. So if you were flying in, you want to count from the time you landed, five to seven days out. If you drove your car, and you drove straight, and you only got gas, I, I suppose, you know, you could do it a little bit earlier.
From the day they left.
But, I mean, I wouldn't want to know what the circumstances are, I guess, in that case.
Yeah.
To make sure that they have a legitimate test.
Yep.
I mean, there's still potential to get, I mean, that's how it's spread in the Berkshires, is people, you know, stopping and getting gas coming up from New York City.
Little tip, wear a glove every time you get gas.
Yep.
Yep, okay, so maybe we could just add that, um, but I think this is really good.
Maybe I add that reference in, in Section 5, the exceptions to stay at home.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, okay.
So in reality, Hawaii really isn't an exempt state, because it's very difficult to get from there to here without being in an airplane.
True.
Right, and you usually have, and you usually are not going to get a direct flight. So, even if it was, you were coming from Hawaii, you stopped off somewhere in a hotspot.
Yeah.
So, uh, that doesn't count, I mean, you can't do that.
Right.
The thing we all have to remember is, we can't, we can't, um, countermand the governor's orders.
No, I agree, but I think that's what.
That's why we refer to them.
I know, I know.
Mostly speaking, can we figure out a way to handle that? Yes, but, you know, I think most people are thinking very carefully about whether they've gone on vacation and where to go. I know I was.
Yeah, I just need people that.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, if you go up into Vermont, nobody seems to have a problem, but if you're, you know, going to Rhode Island, there's obviously a different situation, even though you're just going over the border, in both cases.
Maine, I think Maine and New Hampshire require a COVID test right now.
Yeah, Maine does, yeah, I know that.
That's how we're, that's how, um, we're got reported, you know, people that weren't sick, um, got reported back to us because the test was required.
So I'm.
They were asymptomatic.
I'm really happy with the work you've done on this, it, um, it seems pretty thorough and, um, and, you know.
I had a lot of help.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what it's all about.
There is one section that needs a change to it, and it's, um, I, I need to make the change that we just talked about.
Yep.
Reference the fact that the Families First Coronavirus Act can only be used once. Um, and then.
And then, under.
I just noticed that.
Under Appendix, under Appendix C, um, I'm not sure which, it's under flexible, just after flexible hours, at the top of the pay, it says flex time, uh, no way removes working hours from the town, um, it only allows the town administrator the right to shift hours at, it says his, but put, just put his or her, um, just a typo kind of thing.
Oh, I see.
That's all, just, just include his or her, yep.
Okay.
I think that's it.
I mean, Casey's really done a, a huge lift on.
Yeah, no, it's great.
This is very complete, I feel very satisfied with it.
Yep.
Very professionally done.
Thank Jim Malloy.
Yes, thank you, Jim.
And Kate, and so did Jennifer.
Yep, thank you, Jen.
This wasn't something done in a vacuum.
Well, that's good.
And so did Dick, I have to say, Dick has read this three times. I kept handing it to him, and he kept rolling his eyes at me, because, you know, he, I tried to pull this together and give him sections to look at, and then I gave him the whole thing, and so he's, but he's, he said the same thing, he thought it was pretty comprehensive.
Okay, good.
Um, but if you, if you don't believe me, call him and ask him.
So if we.
There is one section that I wanted adjustment to, so I wonder, is the board ready to talk about actually approving this, or do you want to wait?
I, I'm, I'm okay to move forward, I just, um, what, I guess what I wanted to know is who makes the decision on what phase we're in, and then, um, you know, what the layout.
Okay, so that I think is the Board of Health's decision.
Okay.
About what phase you're in.
Mm-hmm.
And so if you go back to the, to the middle of the document, where it says, um, Phase Reopening, it's Item C in Phase Reopening.
Yep, I see.
Let me tell you how we're working. So Phase B of our Phase Reopening is really what we're doing right now, and there is a, there's some information in Phase B that I would like to add.
Okay.
Um, and this is the problem with working at home, is I couldn't see all my documents.
Yep.
But essentially, what we're doing is, we will reopen to the public by appointment only.
Mm-hmm.
With the exception of the library and the senior center, because they have unique things.
Yeah, the building is a little tougher.
Our construction permitting requirements that the state has promulgated since day one, means that there has to be an intersect either over the phone, on, you know, FaceTime or Skype, or outside with proper social distancing, um, to handle construction issues.
Mm-hmm.
Or septic issues. So effectively, we're in Phase B.
Right.
We're doing it.
Mm-hmm.
And so I would say, um, the board would need to address it, so there was a change I wanted to make in this, so, I would say the board would need to understand, okay, this is what we're physically doing. Um, and Phase B, similar to how the governor does it, if the board would accept the reopening plan and ask the chair to approve the Phase B section change that I want to make after I send it out to everybody, um, then the board would pick that phase and just formalize it. So by formalizing the entire plan, and identifying that right now we're in Phase B by appointment only.
Right.
This is what we're gonna, this is how we're going to do things. You're going to call the offices, you're going to set up an appointment, if there's documentation that we can't push out to you online or via email, then we will leave it in the foyer, and you can pick it up at a specific time.
Right.
If there's, for instance, when we get a drop-off for FedEx or something, that goes to a specific place, so we tell people, leave your documents in the foyer, or put it in the Dropbox.
Right.
Because, as you noted, the Dropbox, we have the big Dropbox now.
Yep.
Um, and we had been taking applications like that. There are certain documents that you can't take electronically, and so.
Right.
We sort of made that accommodation without formalizing it. So, I would ask the board to approve this contingent to a Phase B, uh, modification, just to show a couple more details that I realized I didn't have in this version, and definitely address the travel policies and the guidelines for employment for benefits use and such, in the appendices. And would the board consider having the chair do the approval of the final language for that Phase B description after I send it out to all three members?
Yes, yep, I'm good with that.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, so, now that I made that all convoluted, would you guys be willing to vote it, or?
Yes, yeah, I'm ready.
What do you want me to do?
I'm ready. I've read it, I think it's thorough, it's good, and we're, you know, we're slowly moving forward, and we're addressing people's needs as they need it by appointment, um, the town hall, just to clarify, the town hall will be open during election hours only, for voting only. That's just, you know, the doors are open, but it's to come in and vote in person, um, as required by law, but we're not open to come in and, and sit down and have a conversation unless you've called and made an appointment after this policy takes effect. You make an appointment, and we'll have a space out open, people can be socially distanced, you know, there's cleaning, as you know, there's cleaning involved with all that stuff after people leave, um, it's still a lot of work, um, but as long as we.
It is, it's a hassle.
And I, I have to be clear, Trevor, too, we need to have a logbook. Whoever comes into the town hall has got to sign in.
Yes.
So we have the ability to trace.
Absolutely, you got to be able to trace.
That's the thing I'm missing, Carolyn. I have it drafted, I just was working in two different.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's.
We have to have the ability to trace.
Yep.
So anybody that comes into the town hall has got to log in time.
Yep.
And, and your contact information, and when they log out.
Yep, that's perfect.
And so for early voting, that's a little bit different, because we actually have that information, I talked to Barbara about this, um, yesterday.
Okay.
So when people are voting, they're, they're telling us, okay, this is where I live, here's where I take my ballot.
Right.
So we know who that person is.
But we need the phone numbers, Casey, contact, we need phone numbers.
Okay, because I actually, Pat has drafted a list for me to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, you need the contact information, whether they, you need their cell phone, you need their home phone, and their email. We have to have all that information if you come into the town hall.
I think when I.
That's required for contact tracing.
When I went to dinner the other night, we did that, you know, uh, we went to a restaurant, and they took our contact information, which was great, you know, in case they have an issue, they can reach out to us, so.
Right, and so I had that in my head, but I, Barbara told me I have to do that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that's the new reality, if you're coming in, that's what you got to do.
Yep.
And, and Barbara should be taking that information, even, or anybody, when everybody has an appointment.
Yep.
If you have an appointment with someone, they need to have that logbook filled out.
Okay, so when they, come in the building, we need to.
Right, every department head should have a logbook in their office for their appointment. And in Barbara's case, for the voting, you come in to vote, you got to have all that information filled out before she gives you the ballot.
All right, so for contact tracing, that's what I would add, in the reopenings for appointments only, I would add contact tracing.
Yep.
Um, and identify what that looks like, it's going to be your name, address, phone number, um.
Email if you have it.
And the time that you came in.
Mm-hmm.
The time that you came in.
Yep.
Any, anybody that comes in, we've got to be able to contact them.
Okay.
All right.
So I could make that adjustment, send, send out that change, I would have Kate look at it, because, um, I think we need to make sure that we're preserving employment rights, but also employee rights.
Right.
Um, but I would make the change in Phase B to include the contact tracing, and, um, make that, refine that, that top paragraph a little bit, but if the board's okay with it, this can be a start that I can send out to the department heads and say, okay, this is how the municipal office is going, is going to do it. Now, I already have received a couple of pieces of information from the rec director, and I'm pretty sure that the library director has some information she's waiting to submit. So we'll start to see an influx, but I think the emergency services, they have a different protocol.
Mm-hmm.
And right now, the services, we are still pushing services out to everybody. We made accommodations for the transfer station very early on, but contact for, you know, other highway activities, or other DPW activities, could remain limited, because I think that's what needs to happen, so that we don't create a contact situation for the guys out there who are in construction season and need to be working.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so I'll make those refinements, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the reopening, um, plan and documents provided, um, and, and, and I make a motion to allow the chair to sign after, um, the amendments we talked about Casey's going to put in, um, and then have it reviewed by us, uh, the chair will sign when she's comfortable.
I'll second that.
I will second that. All right, Dave, let Dave second it.
Okay, any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Dave Wilson, aye.
Trevor McDaniel, aye.
Carolyn Ness, aye.
Thank you, thank you so much for all your help on that.
Thank you, everybody, for listening to me patter, you know.
No worries, yeah, it's good.
Okay, it was a huge amount of work, and I just want to thank you, you've been, were wonderful, and you addressed all my concerns the entire time, because I want you to know it was a real effort.
And so one thing I will say to the board is, if something else comes up where we need to add in appendices that I think the Select Board/Board of Health needs to vote, I will bring it to you.
Great, um, so, let's see, so now that that's done, there were some administrators, town administration list you had here, uh, some hemp stuff, and, let's see.
So we received three notifications from the Cannabis Control Commission that three growers, hemp growers, have been approved. Now hemp regulations are completely different from marijuana regulations, that is, in agricultural use.
Correct.
So the guidelines for that are different, and I have to say, I'm not up on those guidelines right now, I hadn't really been paying, it wasn't in the front of my head.
Okay.
So if you have any questions about that, I'd have to research it.
Nope, these are the three.
These are permits that come through the Cannabis Control Commission.
Yep, I've seen that.
Then we have the refinement of Order 48, which is penalty provisions for, uh, non allowable activities like fines for face masks and stuff.
Okay, uh, order amending the administration of penalties. So this, these are things that the state has amended, correct?
Yes, the things the government, the governor amended based on the situational evidence and the data changes.
Okay.
Um, because if you recall, he, um, had, he pushed an order out, and it wa, it must have been 48, he pushed the order out for, um, finding people who aren't following the guidelines.
Okay, yep.
And he treats it like, uh, he treats it in a specific way, so, you know, I haven't had a chance to talk to Dick and John about this, it just came out, so I wanted to get it in, you know, in front of you guys.
Okay.
And then the third thing that I have was the DESI-DPH joint memo, and it came out today.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to have it, cry, so you have a few minutes to read it before you go to your school committee meeting?
Yeah, I'll definitely do that.
Yeah, I'm sure it'll be, it'll come up.
Okay.
Um, then we had an item unanticipated.
Okay.
And that was something that Barbara referenced last week, um, but didn't have the language written because the regulation hadn't been finished by the legislature. So this is what they call the electioneering policy.
Okay.
And the electioneering policy is basically, it, it provides the same allowances for early voting that we have in polling places. Early voting isn't considered, the space where you early vote, isn't considered a polling place. So the legislature put into effect protections for those spaces to keep from influencing voters that are coming in to cast their ballots.
Yep, it's just taking the normal stuff.
You wanna read through it?
Yeah, I'll read it.
I am just looking for it now.
I'll read it so that people, people see it. So this is a Town of Deerfield Select Board policy regarding engineering, uh, excuse me, electioneering during early and absentee voting, whereas Chapter 54, Section 65 of the General Laws of Massachusetts prohibits electioneering, parentheses, the display or distribution of materials intended to influence the actions of voters, um, close parentheses, at or within 150 feet of the entrance of polling places at an election of federal, state, or local, uh, officers, whereas an increasing percentage of Deerfield voters are taking advantage of their right and opportunity to vote in person, by absentee ballot, or during the early voting period established by the legislature, and come to the town offices at 8 Conway Street in order to obtain absentee ballots or cast early ballots. Um, whereas such voters, uh, should be given the same right and opportunity to cast or obtain ballots free of electioneering activity as it, as is enjoyed by voters who cast their vote on the day of the election, whereas observance of the 150-foot rule established by Chapter 54, Section 65, at the town offices during in-person absentee voting or early voting period, would not unduly restrict the ability of any person to display or distribute campaign messages to prospective voters approaching the town offices, and whereas the Select Board has the care, custody, and control of the town offices at 8 Conway Street and the surrounding sidewalks, uh, and may regulate activities thereon. Now, therefore, the Select Board adopts the following regulation for the period designated for in-person absentee voting and the state's early voting period, no poster, card, handbill, place card, picture, or circular intended to influence the action of the voter, other than those expressly authorized by General Law, Chapter 54, Section 65, shall be posted, exhibited, circulated, or distributed in the town clerk's office, in the building where the town clerk's office is located, on the walls thereof, on the preferences on which the town offices at 8 Conway Street stand, within 150 feet of the building entrance door to, uh, said town offices, given under our hands this 19th day of August, 2020. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Dave Wolfman, aye.
Trevor McDaniel, aye.
I'm mute.
Uh.
Carolyn Ness, aye, I'm sorry, I had to, I'm slow, I'm muting.
Okay, we've got a copy here that I'll sign, Dave will sign, then you could sign, Carolyn, when you come in.
Okay. And then Trevor, I just need to make a comment, I need to correct a comment. When I went back and I reviewed the, um, the Cannabis Control Commission, from their information that they sent, I'm sorry, I made a, an error in my comment, and that is that, um, these licenses are given out according to the growth in production of hemp for commercial and research purposes within the guidelines that have been promulgated by the CCC.
Okay.
Sorry, just want to clarify that.
All right, sounds good.
And then, I think that's all I had to do, but I wanted to make sure we got through the electioneering, because, um, Barbara needs that by Saturday.
Yep, we're all set there, um, anything else? Any public comment, anybody, uh, online, or anywhere would like to speak? Say anything to the Select Board, address us?
I think Greg Francheski would like to talk to you.
Okay.
He, so if you look in your, um, public comment, you'll see that Greg-
He's covered by flowers now.
Where is he?
I know, Greg, flowers, my flowers!
Are those flowers for us? He's on mute, he's gonna be here in a second.
Flowers are for you, Trevor.
Oh, well, thank you very much, they look beautiful.
I wanted to, um, to just report back on a couple of things. Obviously, you guys know that there's been a petition that's gotten circulated. Um, it was based on a letter that Erica, Erica Ross wrote, that, um, my wife Lisa sent around to people in, you know, a couple of different venues. I think Facebook probably, and, um, through, you know, email contacts, I did the same. So, um, so far, 236 people have signed, um, have signed the petition. And, um, I've asked a few people to call in tonight and, um, just voice their, to use the phone option, because, um, I think that there are several people that, especially older people, that don't know how to use Zoom.
Of course.
Including me, I have to get my son to help me every time, pretty much, still.
That's fine.
So, um, the first thing I would like to do is just, um, ask, if you could, um, I tried to explain how to do it to Martha Aaronstam,
Mm-hmm.
And, um, she asked Trevor if you would be willing to, to just call her-
Of course.
To have her contact information.
I, I think I do.
And she had, that she, she wanted to say, as a grandmother, and, um, you know, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Senior.
Sure.
So, um, maybe that would be a good place to start.
Yep, I can do that.
Greg, I guess, um, I, I tried to call you twice today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I tried to call you twice, I, I, um, you know, left a message with you on your cell phone.
Okay.
And I wanted to give, I wanted to give you an update, um, where we're at, with what we're doing. Um, uh, there, we're, testing is a huge element of being ready, and we do have availability of tests, we do have capacity in the county, it is available. However, everyone, and the turnaround is between 24 and 36 hours. However, every once in a while, there's, there is a reagent shortage, and we have no ability to monitor it. So this is, we're trying to work this out, because you, you, we can't open the schools if we can't do the testing. And it's just, it's seemingly random when the testing is shut down, and you can't get tests, you know, turned around for like seven to 10 days, which are useless. I also wanted to make sure that you, so we're working on that. We've, uh, sent letters to DPH, um, from the whole county, trying to sort that out, and make that, um, make them aware that we have no ability as local boards to help, and that testing is critical. The second thing is, um, we, um, you know, are trying to communicate, we're trying to come up with a matrix where we have community-wide observation of what's happening, and, and real-time, um, case reporting. Lisa is our public health nurse for 15 other communities by herself, including Conway. Um, Whately is trying to hire a public health, and truthfully, there's been no real communication with Thunderland. So we're trying to work that out. I have an extremely good working relationship with Greenfield, and we have set up weekly calls, uh, multiple times during the week to touch base. So I feel, um, that's adequate. We do not have that relationship with Montague, and we have several school choice students coming from Montague, so we're working on that. So I want you to know that we're taking this very seriously, and we're doing everything we can to come up with, you know, the conditions that would allow the school to open. However, they're not all in place at this moment.
How was, you said testing, I'm not sure what that, who, who's gonna, who would be tested? All of the kids?
No, if you have a COVID, uh, suspicion of a COVID case, um, the, the parent would take the child to, um, the community health center, to the hospital, you would go to a primary care, if they have a primary care doctor, get an order, get it done. Um, you know, that kind of thing. But you have to have testing and tracing, we have tracing capacity, um, to do that. And that's why, you know, we're very, um, I mean, it's very strict, we've been working on this since, well, for seven months now. So, um, we feel fairly comfortable with the setup. It's just, it's not all in place at this point.
I also just wanted to kind of hit on a couple of things that the, um, you know, the, the rollout is a lot different than it was yesterday, the day before that, the 12th, when this was written. Um, you, you know, we're, we're all taking our time and doing our due diligence to make sure that everything is in place to be safe for the employees and, and the children. And so, you know, to, we can't really, it's, it's hard to just look at one snapshot in time, because everything changes constantly. I mean, I think if you hang on at 7 o'clock, you'll hear another story that, you know, as it's changed since yesterday and the day before that. So just how we're rolling out, what we're doing, when the kids are coming back, how many, how long they're coming back for, um, it, it's, you know, it's, it's a constant, you know, negotiation and, um, constant slog of trying to make sure that we have everything in place and people are, are secure and safe to go back, you know, to go back. Um, you know, based on science, and that's what I base this on all, all the time, is the data and, and the science and where we're at, at the moment, and our capacity. Um, I feel comfortable getting going, but we still have, you know, a few things to lay out, and we'll hear from administration tonight, and, um, you know, it's not to say that we won't change on a dime, and, and it may be, I mean, from now until the time we go back to school, um, the kids actually show up back at the school, it'll be a different plan then, too, um, just because we learn every day and we change, um, constantly to, to, to just err on the side of caution and make sure we're doing things right, so, um-
And we- So- As Trevor said, it constantly changes, this is a 24/7 situation. We're putting in 50, 60 hours a week, trying to stay on top of it, every day is different.
And the other-
I know there was concern that DESI guidelines were different than DPH's. We have always said that we were doing DPH guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, the school is aware of that, um, or, you know, the, uh, Union 38 has been aware of it and supported that. Um, we've had multiple discussions on the county level, so everyone is trying to be consistent. Um, the problem is, it just, Greg, every day is different, and, and, I mean, we're trying to do as best we can, um, I, I mean, that's all I can say.
We have new, new data from, from, um, DESI, a joint memo, again, from DESI and the Public Health that came out yesterday. You know, a lot of, a lot of the discussion about, you know, people were concerned, they were like, well, I, I'd choose remote, because I want to feel, you know, safe and stay home, but I, I don't want to do that, because I'm afraid I'm gonna get stuck with a second-rate teacher. Um, that's really not the case, the same teacher's gonna teach every kid. So your frontier, um, you know, whatever, the, the classroom teacher, whoever's teaching the class is gonna teach both the parents, I mean, both, both the kids that are in remote, and the, and the kids that are actually in the school. So there's a lot that's evolving and changing over this time, and I think we, you know, let's just sit back and wait, wait a little bit, we'll see where we're at in a, in a couple of weeks. Um, I think, I think we're moving in the right, right place. I can't see, you're, you're muted, Greg, you're muted. You're muted, Greg, there you go.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yep.
So, you guys probably saw this article about Athol.
Yep.
And the staff is, um, there are, I guess, um, three staff people and one teacher that have tested positive.
Yep.
And, um, they haven't opened school yet, but when you say testing, will the, will the testing also include the teachers and the staff people that work at the school?
They will be-
Is it worth everybody, do the kids come back?
They'll be tested.
No, it's not, well, everyone, every, every person, Greg, every day, people have to go through a checklist, and, and, and you need to stay home, obviously, if you're sick, but-
But if you're, if you're asymptomatic, or whatever the word is, then you would have no way of knowing until you work it.
No, that's right, we, we wouldn't know until someone is, that's true.
They could already be spreading it by that time.
That is absolutely true.
I mean, where I'm coming from is I just feel like, you know, I don't know if you guys have, remember the, the, in the 70s, the phrase, the precautionary principle? The precautionary principle basically just says that you don't, you know, you don't, um, put a nuclear power plant in until you know that it's safe, you know? And, um, with this, I feel like, I, I felt last week, like, you know, I was just, you know, bringing this up, kind of, in response to the school committee meeting, I hadn't talked to that many other people. Um, Erica had written this letter, and Lisa sent the, um, the letter around, obviously. Uh, and the software that allows people to, um, sign the petition also allows them to comment. So there are a few comments, I guess I, I should probably read, um, I can't see anything, you know? But, um, I don't know all these people, but Molly Montgomery said, I care about the safety of this community. Maurice Hoag said, this is not the time to test the waters with children, it's being proven all over the country. Martha, I can't make it, her last name didn't come through, they need to be remote. Sarah Churchill Windsor, not until it's safe. Luke Trezakowski, we have an obligation to support those that need it most. The safest way to do that is by keeping as many people out of the building as possible. Miranda Kuduki, I'm signing, because although our plan has been, and still is, to work remotely this first semester, I guess you misunderstood that. Um, I feel outline explained to me initially is not to be the case, and I fear this could change again to a fully computerized learning platform. There is a lot at stake, I also need to convey that when administrators say plan for a shutdown at any point, what this really means is plan for kids to get sick with COVID. We don't know how many or how severe, but we're openly admitting anyone's child could become sick at some point.
Greg, can I interrupt you a second? Because I don't, we, we've got to get on to another meeting, so I don't have enough time for, for all the comments, but what I want, what I want to say is, um, you always manage risk, right? So, um, there's always an opportunity for somebody to be sick with many different infectious diseases. Um, the, the, the statistics we have right now in our, in our neck of the woods is that we are, um, based on all the guidance, we should be back full-time. Um, and, and I, I don't feel comfortable back full-time, although there's, there's a case to be said that I'd rather have our kids there full-time than going out and coming back, and going out and coming back. I would, I would probably rather everybody in one school, one building, and in that one cohort, and not having to go to their grandmothers, or, you know, a group of kids, and then come back to school. Um, that's not gonna happen right now with the union we have and, and the issues we have going on right now. We also, on the other hand, are not gonna keep our kids home for two or three years. Um, I, I can guarantee, in two years-
Three months is, is a-
No, Greg, let me finish, Greg, because- No, Greg, let me finish, Greg, cause I'm speaking. Greg, I'm speaking. So what I'm, what I'm saying is that we are never going to be at a better place in, for, for several years. Because even if we get a, a vaccine in two or three months, which is a long shot, usually takes 10 years, um, many people are not going to be comfortable taking a vaccine that got rushed out that fast. And a vaccine that gets rushed out that fast may even be at, at, at best 80% uh, a, a chance of, of making sure, like, we, we get our flu vaccine every year. You're lucky if it's 80% good. So you're always going to have this virus in our community. And if we're lucky at, at this safe rate in our community. I'm not saying all over the country and all over the world, and certainly we still have cases that crop up here and there. But we will never be, I'm not finished, Greg. Greg, Greg, I'm not finished. You gotta wait. Greg, you gotta wait a moment. Just let me finish and then I'll let you speak. So we're never going to be 100% safe with this, with this COVID. Uh, it's just gonna be here. And the way we have to manage is the risks and health we do mentally to the kids by not having them back and not teaching. There are many children and many families that I've spoken to that are just as passionate on the other side of the issue that you are. And they want and need their kids in front of their teacher for, for education and for instruction. So we're trying to find that happy balance of making sure that our, that we're taking all the safety precautions we can. Where, that we have fast contact tracing, fast testing in case we have an issue, just like we've treated all the cases we've had in Deerfield since the beginning. So I think our idea is to make sure that we have enough testing and enough, um, tracing available, so if, if a case does pop up, we can make sure it's isolated and we can contact trace it like we've been doing. Um, and, and then also push out the education. And we're, we're doing a better job of figuring out what that education model is and trying to make sure that all kids are being taught the same by the same teacher. I'll finish there and I'll let you speak, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything that you guys are doing and I, and I hear, I hear you completely. I, um, I just feel that, um, this medium of Zoom, for one thing, is a, is an obstacle to your hearing people in the community and, um, the reason why,
Agreed.
I didn't even know, after looking at the website and participating in Zoom meetings with a couple of different groups and, and also in the school committee meeting and the last select board meeting, via Zoom, that I had the option of calling. Because when I looked at the page, it said, it didn't even say the word dial or your, or use your phone to call us. It was in a, a lingo that was specific to Zoom that I was confused by and I didn't understand that I could call in. So I thought I was being so clever tonight, um, telling, you know, some of the, some friends of mine that maybe we could just call and you guys could answer the phone and, you know, talk to people and have it, have it mic'd. Um, because obviously that technology exists and, um, the more primitive form of it would be to just hold your microphone, your phone up to the microphone and, you know, people could hear each other. But you've already got that worked out through Zoom, but people in the community didn't know, some people don't know how to use that. And, um, Martha Aaronstam is one person. So, um, there are probably at least four or five people that I know of that want to call in now. And Martha wanted to ask, she asked if you would be willing to call her because she didn't know what to do with all those numbers and passcodes and all that stuff, so she's not familiar with it. So would you be willing to do that?
Well, I'm not calling her on the, in a meeting tonight, no, but I will reach out to her.
She has to call in.
Yeah, I can reach out to her personally and I'll speak to her, but not through a meeting like this. It's, it's not how it works. But I, so Greg, I've had 250 people were on the school committee meeting the other night and I've probably got 100 letters, um, and then all the people who signed this. I know people are concerned. It's not that I haven't heard what their concerns are. I'm, I'm fully aware. Um, and I have concerns, just as many on the other side, that want their kids back full-time. So I'm just trying to find, work with science and public health to make sure we're doing everything we can to find that good, happy medium to get our kids educated and get started back and then make sure that we are as nimble as we can if we have a case to address and that we are as nimble as we can be if we do have something show up, we can, we can, we can shut down, assess and then move on. Um, and either close down and move fully remote or to stay, stay hybrid and come back. So as you see, you'll be on in a half hour and you can watch the, the, the school committee meeting and hear from the administration and local public health and, uh, public health nurses to see where we're at.
Greg, Greg, if all, if all the criteria have been met and, and we are able to open, it will be a day-to-day operation because the situation changes every day. So because we're opening one day, doesn't mean that we'll be opening the next day. It depends on, you know, if we have cases show up, if it, if there is, if we feel there's community spread or if testing is no longer available, um, or return time. Cause it, what it is, what it appears to be is the reagent shortage. And there's no way for us to monitor that at the moment. So if you'd have the swab, you put your swab into the reagent and it's been sent out. So like I said, it seems like we have capacity. It seems like the testing is available, um, and it's returning in 24 to 36 hours right now. However, randomly, all of a sudden, there's, um, no reagent and everything shuts down and stops. In that situation, the school can't operate because then testing is no longer available. And that can happen, you know, just between three and four o'clock in the afternoon. Or, you know, sometime in the morning, whatever. The school then will be closed because testing is no longer available. We have no ability to test. So, I, I mean, there's so many moving parts. We have worked so many hours trying to build relationships, get the information and be as safe as possible. Data will inform strategy. But people have to realize this is a day-to-day thing. Every day is a snow day call. We don't know what the situation will be from day to day. And when I say we're going to work on stuff, it's too early to inform whether the schools are going to open or not. And the reason why is because not everything is in place at this point. But we're still, you know, ways away from school opening. And that's not to say that it can't be worked out or not. I mean, there's every opportunity, maybe we can't work it out to satisfactory levels. It's very, very difficult for us as well. We absolutely want people to be safe. I am, that is the number one thing for me. I don't care how many people scream and yell at me if, you know, I feel it's not safe, it's not safe and I'm not going to support opening a school. I mean, that's just the way I feel. Um, so, but it's the data and, and, and we, we don't have everything in place at the moment, but we're, we're working very hard to try to do that and, um, we just don't know wh- when the timeline is. I'm trying to be really honest and to tell you exactly what we have.
There's been a lot of concerns from parents. I didn't think that there was any requirement for testing for any teachers or students to go back into the school.
No, we're talking about if people are sick or they have symptoms or there's a, a contact. If, if, um, a, say in a split household, um, you know, a student goes home to the father's household on a Tuesday night and the, you find out that the father potentially has COVID or is a contact with COVID, then you would want to have that child tested and, you know,
It is very hard to get tested. I mean, today we, we wanted to get tested. We had to go all the way to Chickapie and we had to wait like 90 minutes and we don't get our results back for five to, to seven to 10 days.
No, not always.
No, that, in the county, there is testing available. We, we had a meeting last week, it's a community health center. It's through your, um, primary care, they do it at the hospital.
You'll get your referral from your doctor, right? So this, this is after somebody gets symptoms or is sick.
Correct.
But it's still,
No, this is if you're, uh, if you're a contact, if you're a contact.
Right, right, but I mean, none of this gets triggered. People don't get tested until they know they were exposed to somebody with COVID or somebody gets sick.
We, we, we do not, we're not just testing our whole community. That is true.
Until we have the next,
Private schools, the private schools have the financial ability to do, uh, testing all week. Every, you know, their student popul-, uh, day student population is going to get tested twice a week. Their staff are getting tested twice a week. Everyone's getting tested when they come back and start. They have the ability to do testing in their community on a regular basis. We're hoping that we're going to get some kind of new test, the new test, the spit test. And if that's available in the next few weeks,
That's coming on pretty quick.
Because then everybody will be tested.
Yep, it has to be economical and fast.
Still, there, there are a lot of time lags between testing and, and getting your results and it isn't that easy to find a test. I couldn't find anywhere where I didn't need a doctor referral and I wanted to get one right away because I have symptoms. And so I had to drive to Chickapie today. Other, other than that, I would have to wait for my doctor to get around to returning my call and then that felt like it would take too long. But the other public health concern, I, I understand children don't do recover from this and I understand that teachers that are high-risk won't have to go into the classroom. I understand there's the option to be remote. But what I wanted to speak about and, and maybe this, there's another forum that would be more appropriate is, is the public health issues of the, of the multi-generational households and the grandparents. I have a letter from Judy and John Rose who were too shy to really talk today, but they're very, very concerned because they take care of their grandson. They pick him up from the Whately Elementary School. They're both high-risk, they're both in almost 80 years old. They, they represent a lot of different people and to wait until there's an outbreak and they could potentially be exposed, there's just,
Here's the other thing,
There's so many more people affected by the school's opening than school community and the parents.
Lisa, so the other thing is that people have to really look at their own life and decide, um, should I be taking, should I be picking up those kids? Should I be around them? Uh, you'd have to take some personal responsibility and understand, like, if, if I'm at high risk, I should not be picking up my grandchild, you know? Or that grandch-, or that family needs to decide if that's the only way that there's caregiver taken for this person because the mom's got to go to work, uh, or dad's got to go to work, then there, there needs to be another, another way to either take care of that or they need to maybe have that child be remote. You know, there's decisions that people have to make personally about their personal, um, their personal exposure and their life circumstances, whether they should be having their kids come to school or they should be having an elderly grandparent picking up a child after they go to a, to a school. I mean, that probably isn't the, the best way to move forward for that family, I'm thinking. If they're that concerned about their health and, and where that child's been. Um, again, our caseload is very, very low in our community. So I think the, the odds of them, um, of the child contracting, you know, con, getting, getting COVID and bringing it back to the family are, are fairly small. And that's what all the data is telling us right now. That's why they're saying it's okay to go back. But, um, but people have to kind of decide for themselves. Is that, is that the best thing for our family? Do we, should we take a more insular approach and stay home more? Um, I mean, I've been in the community and I cover all of Western Massachusetts. I go to every single town. I've been working straight on through from day one on this stuff. But I also take a lot of precaution in what I do and where I am and who I'm seeing and always wearing this wherever I go. I've got hand sanitizer in the car. I wash my hands constantly. Um, you know, I take care to make sure I'm going to be safe. And, um, you know, we didn't see our grandpa, or my parents for a very long time because we were concerned and my in-laws are, are, you know, can be, um, susceptible. So we didn't want to see them for a long time. But we've gotten more comfortable, we know how to be safe around each other. I think the students are going to, and the, and the teachers are going to understand what their limitations are and we're going to learn as we go. My fear is we cannot stay secluded in our house and not educating our kids for another couple of years. It just isn't going to happen. We are the safest we are going to be or have been, uh, for, for quite a long time. And if we see it, see, see the, the indicators creeping up in our area, we're going to have to make that change. But there, I, I see honestly, there is no way we're going to be at a 0% risk for a couple of years. And I don't think we will ever be. This thing is so ingrained in this, this community, uh, this, this nation. Um, I, I put most of the blame at the current administration. They ignored this problem for so long. They let it go completely out of control to this day. Uh, they haven't set up the infrastructure for the testing that we need. Um, it's criminal. It's criminal what this administration has done. I, just my personal opinion, not a view of the town or the board, my personal opinion. I think it's criminal what they've done to this nation and, um, I hope we see a change. Um, but we, we have to move forward with what we have. We cannot stay, you know, insular for, for many years. I, I don't ever see this getting better. Um, it's going to be a long, long time before we're all safe again. Um, I don't think we ever will be.
I, I think that at the very least, the board of health should hear from the school what their contact tracing plan is because I've never gotten an answer about that. And it seems like they would really have to do some logistical planning and then,
They have.
It would be valuable to the community also.
They have, they have.
We have, Lisa.
They have, okay.
Yeah, we have and we have.
It seems just so ironic that you guys are so careful about who comes into the town hall and the school committee meets remotely because they feel like it's not safe to meet together, yet they think it's safe for hundreds of kids. Teachers to be together in a building, like, it's just, the irony is huge. So maybe there could be some communication about why there's a different standard for schools than there are for other towns.
I think, I think you're missing the point, Lisa. It's not that we wouldn't meet. I mean, we, David's here, we've meet, we've met many times. We'll have people in the room, we'll meet. It's easier to meet online. So, you know, if you don't have to go into a room with, you know, 20 people and meet, why would you? I mean, it's so much easier to put it on, on, you know, we've learned a lot from this. People can stay at home and work easier. We can do meetings distantly and remotely. We don't all have to be in the same room, just, you know, and we're, we just voted tonight on a reopening plan for the, for the town. Cause we're slowly opening that up for people to come in by appointment only as they need and to be open for elections. So I think it's time to start moving forward. We understand where we're at now and we need to just look at, um, how we need to operate as a town and, and take baby steps forward to get, to get moving. Um, and, and to understand how we're going to live with this virus for several years to come. And I think, um, I, I don't think we can be secluded forever and I think people still should make a personal decision on their own. Do they feel it's safe enough to bring their kids into a school or to walk into a restaurant? Or to go to beach, go to the beach? I mean, people are all on vacation, they're, you know, going to restaurants or, you know, everybody's kind of going out and doing their thing. When we get to school, everyone's like, oh no, we don't want to go there. So, I mean, there's, you, I think you can do it safely, smartly. And if you feel like your family, it's not good enough for you, you don't feel safe enough, then you should stay home. I mean, that's, I think people need to take personal responsibility about where they're at.
I understand that, but, but the other thing is that the school's reopening will increase community spread and I disagree with the logic that it's going to be here for years, so we have to deal with it. There's so much unknown about this virus. Every, every week we learn more about how it spreads, how it affects people. So, and, and the, and the vaccination could exist in, in, you know, next year and a couple of months in the spring. So we will, it will be getting better and I think,
But what are the metrics?
I'm talking about people not learning. So I'm just, I know, you know, it's, it's, it's hopeless. I know that they, they have to, they want it, they're, they're all hell-bent on going in person. But it's just to me, it's so predictable that within a few weeks, there's going to be cases, increased cases. People are going to get sick and people might die.
May, may or may not, I don't think so.
I'm just trying to advocate for the people who now who are alive, who won't be, might not be alive again in, in a month.
Well, we hear you.
Because in two months, they're going to have.
We hear you and thank you for advocating.
Can I add, can I, can I add something?
Yep, one last thing and we're gonna, we gotta move on. I gotta get ready for my next meeting.
Okay, so there, there will be a bunch of people trying to call in with various information, um, and, and, you know, opinions. Um, but I just looked up the results in Italy and in Italy, back in the beginning of all this, 6,000 a day, now less than 500. And the reason is because Italy took it very seriously from the very beginning, as have many other countries. Our country did not do that.
Yep.
And our leadership has been saying, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay. And obviously it's not. We have 170,000 people that have been exposed, right? So,
Died, died.
Sorry, that have died.
Millions exposed.
Who knows how many millions that have been exposed.
22 million.
So what we're doing, we're gambling with our, our community and our children's lives. And I don't think that it's necessary that we gamble it at all. And I think that the sooner we stop gambling, the sooner we'll solve the problem. Because the, the problem will only be solved when everyone is in unity, unison, saying, uh, that, saying that they understand that it's their personal responsibility to do all these things. And when, you know, people are all wearing masks, they have mask ordinances. You can't even walk through Center of Northampton and Amherst anymore without a mask, which I think is a good idea.
Yeah.
But, you know, we don't want to do it because we're American and we think we can just get away with whatever we want. We can have whatever we want. And I definitely want my kid back in school, but I know I can't have it now.
Okay.
So I'll keep him out if I, So I'll keep him out if I have to.
That's fine.
But then I'm depriving him of access to, you know, what everybody else has got for the short period of time that they will have it. But most likely, they're going to have to close the schools. And if we're not testing the staff and teachers, we're gonna have the same results that AFAL has, which hasn't even opened yet. I mean, AFAL already has four people, four staff people, that are exposing each other, you know, and other people in the building to what they have. And it just doesn't make sense to me.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Lisa. Any other comments on the line? We've got a, I've got to get off for our next meeting, so. Uh, but I do want to allow anybody else who wants to speak or call in, have a, a comment. And then certainly you're welcome to call into the school committee meeting. That'll be starting at, at, uh, seven o'clock. If there are no other public comments, um, I would make a motion to just, um, bear with me one second here.
I'll make that motion to adjourn, Trevor.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna recess, we're gonna make a, could you make a motion to recess and reconvene at the school committee meeting?
I make a motion to, um, uh-
Recess?
Recess to, um, and then reopen at the school committee meeting.
And then we will adjourn upon-
And it's time to conclude, yeah.
We will adjourn upon completion of the school committee meeting.
I'll second that.
Are you, are we, how are we connecting to the school committee meeting, Trevor?
So, um, so, uh, before we close out the vote, so what you would do is, um, you could sign on, uh, uh, you know, personally on your device. If, if, again, if you go to, the easiest way to sign up on Zoom is to go to the Town of Deerfield Elementary School page. You'll see the meeting agenda there. Once you open up the agenda, it's usually a PDF file, you just click on that link for the Zoom meeting, and you will get in. It may be on Google, uh, excuse me. The school vote, uh, meets on Google Meet instead of Zoom, so it's a different app, but it's Google.
Okay.
So if you're using a Google browser, Chrome or something, you'll still be able to get in, so, um-
I think Victoria, I think Victoria was gonna sign in, so-
Yeah, that'd be great, and as long as you're there-
It'll be okay.
Yeah, I told, uh, talked to Darius today. I said that you may be on. I know Meg Birch is gonna be there. I've watched Frontiers last night and Waitley's the other night, and, um, so I'm, I'm familiar with what Meg is talking about, and so she'll be going through a lot of the stuff that you all have been working with her on and all the other school nurses. So it'd be great if you're there and wanted to, you know, chime in here and there.
Okay.
Okay, great. So, um, so we've got that, uh, motion to recess and reconvene at the school committee meeting at 7:00 PM, and we'll adjourn after the school committee meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye, Dave Wolfman.
Aye, Trevor McDaniel.
Aye, Carolyn Ness.
Great, thank you, Carolyn.
I call the meeting of the Deerfield School Committee to order at 7:00 PM on August 19th, 2020. I do want to point out to everyone that this meeting is being streamed live and is being recorded. Uh, so we will commence with the agenda. And the first item on the agenda, after the call to order, is a review and approve minutes of May 13th and June 18th, 2020.
This is Trevor McDaniel. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Wednesday, May 13th, 2020.
Do we have seconds? Is that David? Do we have any discussion? I hear no discussion, so all those in favor, roll call, vote. David Sharp?
Yes.
Carrie Echols?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
And Ken Cutterback? Yes, it's unanimous.
Make the motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, June 18th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second. Carrie Echols.
Carrie, I thought that was Carrie, so, all right. Any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, all those in, uh, not all those in favor, roll call, vote. David Sharp?
Yes.
Carrie Echols?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
And Ken Cutterback? Yes, it is unanimous also. So that takes care of the minutes at this point in time, and we are up to the financial statement.
Okay, uh, so first thing we're gonna talk about is the warrants that were signed electronically. So we had a batch of warrants in July that were for fiscal year 20. There were eight warrants totaling forty-nine thousand, nine hundred, sixteen dollars and forty-two cents. And we had two batches of warrants signed for fiscal year 21 already in August. The first contained five warrants for thirteen thousand, six hundred, eighty-five dollars and thirty-two cents, and the second had three warrants totaling fifty-one thousand, one hundred, sixty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. So thank you, school committee, for reviewing and signing those electronically. Um, Ken, I did send out this report, um, to school committee today, so you should be able to pull those numbers directly from the report. And I do apologize for not getting it out to you sooner. I worked as quickly as I could this week with all of the meetings that we had, so, um, I got it out to you as soon as I could today. In the future, I'll, I'll aim to do it in February and get it to you early.
I think, given the circumstances and the fact that we are able to review the warrants now, um, online, and before we sign them, it, it makes things much more efficient, so it's, I, yeah, no need for an apology, especially given this special summer that you're having in that, in the offices, so. Thank you very much for the, for the information. I've had a chance just to glance at the, uh, financial report. So, um, so thank you again. Any, any other news?
Well, I, I did want to go over the, um, finances that I reported on in that report for this meeting.
Sure, absolutely.
There's a lot of information to take in. Um, I'll try to talk as clearly and precisely as I can, but move quickly so that we don't hold up the rest of the meeting. Um, but what I'm going to do is first talk about fiscal year 21, how the general fund wrapped up and all of our revolving funds, then, I'm sorry, fiscal year 20. Uh, then I'll go into talking about fiscal year 21, what those revolving funds look like at this point, given the revenue and expenditures, and then we'll close out by talking about the grants that are available to Deerfield Elementary for COVID-related expenditures. So we met about three months ago. Uh, that's the last big financial update that you received, and at that time, we thought we had about a hundred and fifteen thousand remaining to be spent in the general fund. Uh, we estimated that we would spend, or I estimated, I should say, that we would spend around ninety-four thousand. And it left very little money remaining in Deerfield's general fund budget, around twenty thousand, which it was agreed upon that we would, um, allocate that for the one-to-one technology initiative so that we could put that money towards more Chromebook purchases for students. Um, the, any remaining funds, if any beyond that, were to be reallocated from school choice so that we could put money back into school choice in support of the level-funded budget for fiscal year 21. Well, I'm happy to report that my estimating was completely off. Um, we actually had more money available than I anticipated. And we ended up doing a transfer of a hundred and ninety-five dollar, none, a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from the general fund back to school choice for use for this year and years in the future. Uh, and that Chromebook purchase was also covered by the town funding for the Municipal, Municipal Cares Act grant. Um, so we ended up with quite a, quite a bit of money going back into school choice. So, you know, I have to thank Tina and the other staff who are responsible for spending at the school level for really taking the budget freeze seriously, um, and really keeping expenses down to a minimum in that last six weeks of school, so, uh, thank you for that. Any questions before I continue?
No. Uh, just one question on the Chromebook purchase. Have we heard anything about delivery? Any, any updates on it?
No.
Okay, that's all. Just a curiosity question.
Yeah, last I had heard, they were on back order, and I think, um, one of the other principals had heard maybe November they would be here, and I'm sure, um, Darius or Tina could talk more about the existing Chromebook state, regardless of that delivery, if, if you guys want that information.
All right, so thank you.
Okay, so moving on, um, so the school choice analysis. Uh, there is some bad news here. While we ended out in the general fund positive and were able, able to move money back, school choice revenue was a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars less than we anticipated. School choice numbers are based on your end of the prior year numbers, and unfortunately, when the budget was built going into fiscal year 20, the counts were not necessarily, um, looked at very closely, the counts of students, and our enrollment in FY 20 dropped compared to FY 19. So what DESI does is they base your 20 funding based on the prior year, and in June, then they make an adjustment if you're, if you, if you've been overpaid or underpaid. And we had been overpaid in the prior year, so they adjusted down our school choice revenue by a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. It's very unfortunate, but not much we can do about it at this point. The good news is that expenses were significantly lower because we had, um, the reallocation from general fund, but we also had some payroll expenses that were lower than we had budgeted for school choice. So we ended up with a net increase over the projected numbers of roughly a hundred thousand dollars over what we anticipated, and, uh, the school choice revolving fund is right around a million dollars, which is pretty close to where we started last school year at. Um, so we're still in a really healthy shape, which is great news because we are gonna have some hardships to consider for FY 21 from, um, COVID-related tuition and, uh, revenue losses. Um, I'm gonna move on from there to the early childhood revolving. This was an account that we also discussed in May. We knew that we were going to have tuition reductions because we were not charging tuition during the COVID closure. Uh, so that revenue was down about twenty-seven thousand. Good news there is our salaries and expenditures were lower than budgeted. We didn't have as many expenses in those last few weeks of school. We didn't have, uh, the June summer staffing to pay for out of this count like we do normally. Um, so we still ended in a positive note, and currently, the end-of-year balance is about eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The special education revolving fund is the next fund that we're going to talk about. Uh, revenue was exactly as we budgeted it, but expenditures were slightly less. Uh, so this resulted in an increase in revenue of around fifteen thousand. And going into fiscal year 21, the special education revolving account has approximately eighty-two thousand dollars in support of future years. The final fund that we're gonna talk about to close out FY 20 is the school lunch revolving analysis. Again, another account we discussed in May. This fund had a revenue loss because we were giving free and reduced, or I'm sorry, free lunches to, um, not just existing students, but siblings. Um, anyone really who wanted it could come, which was great. We could offer that to our community. However, it did mean that we had a decrease in revenue. We did get some reimbursement from the government, but it was, um, certainly not where we expected things to be. The net profit and loss for the year was a loss of about thirteen thousand dollars in the school lunch program. Thankfully, there was a good beginning balance, and we're ending the year with almost twenty-six thousand dollars going into fiscal year 21. Any questions about the 20 summaries or any of those revolving funds?
One, just one question. Was there, um, any way that, um, so the, did, could the Cares Act help cover some of that funding? I know that the town's paid a little bit for the senior food, but it was just cost, so we probably lost money on that, too. And I just can't thank you enough. I really, on behalf of our seniors, I can't thank you enough for what the school did to step up, and it's still doing, providing lunches and breakfast and stuff for our seniors. Um, it's just been a huge help and such a, um, even just a social, where they can come and get food, um, it means the world to them, and just to get out and be able to get something and have some food and a breakfast for the next morning, it's been tremendously positive. Um, wonderful, wonderful thing that the school's done. I just didn't know if there was a, a way to recoup some of that from Cares Act or any other.
So unfortunately, there is not. Um, the good news with the school lunch program is that DESI reimbursed regardless of if the student or family was a free or reduced lunch eligible. So we did see some income from families who wouldn't normally get free or reduced lunch. Uh, the way that the grants that we've received so far are written, they can't be used to offset lost revenue in any kind of revolving fund. They also cannot be used for any, um, expenses that are budgeted already. So all of these things that happened last year, unfortunately, we can't do that. The other thing that we try to avoid with, and these are all considered grants, and one thing that we try to avoid with grants is, um, there is a requirement with Mass Teachers Association, or I'm, I'm sorry, Mass, um, Retirement System to pay nine percent of any salary that is paid from a grant into the teacher retirement. So grant funding is limited, and we try not to lose that nine percent of that salary on top of it from a grant. So we try to do non-salary-related expenditures or stipends, because stipends are not pensionable.
Right.
Unfortunately, no, we can't recoup any of that from COVID funding.
Just, just curious.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on 20 before I continue on?
No.
Okay, um, so 21, I did send you the general fund, uh, July expense report. I didn't send you the school choice numbers yet because I'm still uploading the budget based on what we agreed upon, and then some additional expenses that we're gonna talk about here, but I, I sent you the July report for general fund. There's nothing concerning, um, the only account that I'm really keeping an eye on at this point, if you look at that report, function code, I believe it's forty-two twenty under buildings and maintenance. The line for general repairs is already used at about forty percent. So that flagged me that we're, you know, a month in the school, um, and we've already used that amount. And what I've learned in conversation with our facilities director is that we pay for the energy management system expenditure out of that line, which is about seventy-three hundred dollars. So I think moving forward, that's something that we're gonna want to talk about if we want to move that money to a different, or that expense to a different line so that the expense that's meant for building, building repairs, the budget that's meant for building repairs, actually can repair the building. This is more of a maintenance program. They come in and, you know, assess it and fix it if needed, but it's a lot of money to take right off the top July 1 from our repairs line. So just something to think about moving forward.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, so we're gonna move on here to fiscal year 21, school choice. Um, so what, i- in the report that I gave you, there was total expenditures of four hundred and sixty thousand. That includes forty-five thousand for COVID-related expenditures that were not budgeted when we built the budgets in the spring. Um, the, that money has not been spent yet. I only have it in there as a placeholder at this point. In the event that we use all of the grant funding, this gives us something guaranteed to fall back on that we're not gonna use for any other need and really hold that money in a safe spot for us. So I wanted you to know that I added those funds in there for COVID expenditures. The other challenge here with school choice for 21 is we took a hit in 20, um, as I explained previously with the enrollment and the tuition. We're gonna take an additional hit in 21. Tina looked very closely at the roster for the end of 20 that the DESI would use to project our 21 revenues, and the kids coming in do not offset the kids going out. So we're looking at a sixty-five thousand dollar loss in school choice for 21 as well. So between the two years, um, we're down quite a bit of money in school choice. It's, uh, I think about a hundred and ten thousand dollars less between the two years from what we had planned on. Um, and we're looking at ending the year, even with those expenses, right around nine hundred thousand as it stands right now. I'm gonna be completely honest that we're gonna need that money for additional expenses. You'll learn more as I continue through, but we have some, um, tough position we're in with a couple of these revolving funds.
Okay.
So as it stands right now, good spot, but more to be discussed. Early childhood revolving is one of the accounts of the funds that we need to pay attention to.
Charlie, can I ask a question?
David, go ahead. Yes, of course.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
You just said something that confused me a little bit. Um, you, you talked about the outflow of choice money and the inflow based on students coming and going from our district. But we don't account for that in our school choice fund on this paper, do we? Because I thought the outgoing-
Let me clarify that, but what I- What I'm referring to is the students who choice in who are leaving Deerfield Elementary, whether they're sixth graders and graduated or they moved on. I'm not referring to the sending students out of district.
Got you. I missed that. Sorry. Okay.
No, no problem. That's a good point of clarification. Okay, early childhood revolving fund. So revenues were down from last year, even though we are starting off the year with almost $20,000 in existing revenue. Our projections for this year are significantly lower than what we went into the budget planning process with. We're looking at an enrollment of only 14 students, and not all of those students would be paying tuition because our special education students, we have to offer free services, too. So we're only looking at $14,000 in revenue. And that's certainly significantly less than what we would have planned for our preschool programs in Deerfield. Expenses do not change, however, even though our tuition source is going down. We still need the same teachers. We have IAs planned. So we're looking at, at the end of 21, the way the budget is built right now, a loss in the early childhood program of $122,000. So this is where I was saying, we're going to need that school choice money. It's, you know, beyond a bummer that our student count is down and we're losing revenue, but we're starting off good and we've still got a good amount in there.
Are we seeing that, and maybe Tina could answer this, too, are we seeing the low number of students signed up based on just the number of kids available or based on COVID?
I don't want to speak too much about the number of kids signed up because I can't speak to that. But what I know about this budget is that we have a limited capacity that we can take for preschool kids based on EPC and DESI regulations. Yeah.
Right. Got it. Okay.
I don't think it has anything to do with the kids that wanted to come to school.
Right. We could take a lot more. There's a lot more people that want to come. We just don't have the space to be able to do it.
Exactly.
New environment. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So we are going to have to make some decisions on where to pay this staffing from. We could look at the general fund and see what position vacancies we have there because we do have some position vacancies there. Tina may need to fill some of those, but we've kind of been holding off on hiring at this point. So her and I will have to have some discussions about that. Or we could always use the school choice funds, which, thank goodness, we have available to us. Long term, this is not just a problem for fiscal year 21. This is a problem for 22 and beyond because if we don't replenish this fund in any way, all of these expenditures are going to have to continue to be paid from a different revenue source. And we do not know what enrollment looks like for next school year, which seems far away, but in reality, it's not. And it's things that we need to start thinking about.
So, and if we don't have, if we're still limited by the space, that doesn't change.
No, unless something changes with the guidelines. You know, if we get a vaccine and we can increase numbers, yeah, we could be in the same predicament next school year.
If we had a bigger room, like if we... Hypothetically, we dropped a gigantic inside room there. Would we be able to bring in more people? It really has to do with the room and the space, right?
Yes.
Trevor, Tina, I have to keep my camera off because my internet is a little spotty where I am.
Yep.
It also has to do with the model two, like half days and the availability of families that are able to join in on our schedule, if you will. So I'm sure it's very convenient for them.
Right. If we were full time, it'd be a lot different.
Yeah.
Any other questions about early childhood before I continue on?
Nope, that was good. Thank you.
Okay. So special education revolving fund revenue is as we anticipate based on the budget in the spring. There's not a whole lot to report here. We are expending out more than we're bringing in. However, we're starting with $82,000. So we're looking at ending the year, assuming no changes, which we always know that this is one of those kind of funds that fluctuates based on the needs of the community. But we're looking at about $70,000 remaining in the special education fund at the end of FY 21. So nothing terrible to report there.
Quick question, though. There was a concern with a possible out of district placement. Is that no longer a concern or... For special education?
Yeah, Ken, I don't think that's any longer a concern. I think they're housing that, too.
Thank you. Okay, good. Just wanted to check.
Okay, school lunch revolving is the last we're going to discuss for fiscal year 21 at this time. As I said earlier, we're starting 21 with almost $26,000. Like the early childhood revolving fund, school lunch is going to be problematic for Deerfield Elementary. We, again, don't know what meals are going to look like. Even with students returning to school in the hybrid model, we're not sure how many are actually going to choose to have school lunch versus bringing their own. DESI could also change the plans. They could extend this waiver where they're offering free lunches to everyone for a longer amount of time. There's a lot up in the air with this. But right now, we still have $56,000 in salaries and wages that we need to pay from the school lunch revolving fund, plus food costs and overhead for that program. So just looking at wages, we would be at a loss by the end of the year of $25,000. So as we discussed with early childhood, we are going to need to have some other funding sources and make some decisions on where to pay our school lunch staff moving forward. And I'll have more information on that. You know, Mary and I are in close communication about, you know, what do we need for staffing? What are we thinking we need for food? And, you know, it's been difficult because the plans keep changing and evolving day by day and sometimes hour by hour. And, you know, we're doing the best that we can to come up with numbers. I think probably we're going to be into at least mid-October before we have a real idea of what the revenue is going to look like in this account, if not a little bit longer than that. And, you know, we're going to have to just move some things around based on the existing issues we have with finances for school lunch. Any questions about that? Okay, so I mean, I think that we've had to take in some difficult news today. I think we anticipated that this was going to be a challenge. Certainly not the best position we want to be in in some of these revolving funds that do support our faculty and staff. But at the same time, I'm glad that we do have resources from school choice to be able to help support these programs. And again, that long-term discussion is something we're going to have to continue for future years. So the final... Oh, Ken, do you have anything on that before I talk about the grant funding?
No, I'm in complete agreement. I just think we're in, you know, we're in such uncharted waters here that the plan that you've outlined to me and the level of detail you've given us is very reassuring. We know we've got some funds that we can use to cover these uncertainties for this year and it looks like for the foreseeable fiscal year following, when hopefully things will start to clarify and the waters won't be quite as muddy so that planning for school years will be a little bit easier than it's obviously been during this timeframe. So the work you and your staff are doing is phenomenal, Shelley. We thank you for that.
Thank you. All right, quickly, I'll close out with the grant information related to COVID-19. So Deerfield Elementary at this time is receiving roughly $162,000 in grant funding. The first source of funding for this was from the Municipal CARES Act that we submitted expenditures for in fiscal year 20. We put in for $65,500 in technology for the one-to-one initiative, and that has been fully funded. I'm happy to report Casey did let me know that we received all of our funding there. There's another small amount of money coming from that first funding source for PPE and sanitation equipment. Then we have a second grant from elementary and secondary education. It's an emergency relief fund. The award for this was based on Title I funding. So Deerfield is receiving $26,651. This has been intended to be for COVID-related expenses. However, if we are in a situation where we do need to fund something that was previously budgeted, we can use it for things that would normally qualify under Title I. However, we are trying to keep it COVID-related because the amount of expenditures is, you know, more than we can even think about. Every day, something new comes up. And the last grant so far for COVID relief is a coronavirus relief fund, also through DESI. What they did was award an additional $225 per student based on foundation enrollment, which is our Deerfield students, Deerfield residents. So that awarded Deerfield Elementary $69,751. So of that $162,000, we've spent around 81 and have about 81 and a half-ish left to spend. So what we will do is spend down all of the grant money. I will be meeting with Tina in the coming week, if not two weeks, to plan out the rest of that spending to make sure that we're utilizing that money to the greatest potential. And then from there, we have that $45,000 that is earmarked in school choice. Any grant questions? Or COVID questions in general? Related to finances?
Careful what you ask for.
I know.
No.
Okay.
Job, thank you.
No.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Shelley. And as I said, thank you. Thank you to your team, please. Let them know our appreciation. So at this point in time, we're moving on the agenda to public comments. And just as a... As a heads up, if there are people, and we have about 79 people participating at this point in time, and roughly 65 or 6 of them would be the general public, I think. So if you have a desire to make a public comment at this stage, I ask you to do one to, please, raise your hand on the chat... In the chat area and just say you're interested in commenting. And I will recognize people in order as they come. We ask that you only use the chat area to raise your hand. We don't want dialogue taking place after people or as people are making their comments. And that is not the purpose. When you're recognized, I will call your name, and you will have two minutes to comment. And we will try and stick to about a two-minute timeline and go from there. So please, as I said, raise your hand in the area. So I see Andrea Callahan has raised a hand twice. But I figured that was the intent the first time around. So Andrea Callahan, if you know how to unmute, please unmute and we'll take your comment.
You're there. Hi. Hi, I'm Andrea Callahan. Hi, I'm an IA at Deerfield Elementary. I've been there about seven, eight years. I have a master's degree. I make $18 an hour. I, when you look at me, I don't know if you can see me. I am the face of COVID in your employee. Last February, mid-February, a child who had just gotten off a plane, who was very, very sick, sneezed on the side of my face. I ran in the bathroom. I put soap, tried to get it off. Eight days later, I got sick. And on March 9th, I was diagnosed with COVID at my doctor's office, and my son. By then, he had caught it, too. For two months, I was really, really, really sick. I should have been hospitalized, but I couldn't because I'm a single mom of a kid with autism and epilepsy. And so the doctors agreed to check in twice a day. They gave me nebulizer, prednisone, rescue inhaler, emergency inhaler, 20 days of prednisone, all sorts of meds. And by the skin of my teeth, I was able to stay home. But I coughed up blood. I vomited. There were days I laid in my vomit because I couldn't get, I couldn't change. Today, I went to my physical appointment and I found out that my doctor told me 70% of the people my age who have COVID end up with structural heart abnormalities. So now I'm getting checked for an enlarged heart. I continue to cough all night and a lot of the day. And I have pains in my right lung. So they're going to screen. I have a long history of pneumonia. I already had scar tissue. And so now they're going to screen me for lung damage as well. You didn't know, school committee, Darius, you didn't know about this back in February and March. But you know about it now. I don't want to see my coworkers go through this because there was one night where I was gasping for breath. I was in respiratory distress, and I was pretty close. And I don't want to see children go through this. I don't want to be organizing pictures of staff people, my coworkers, my friends, and students, children that I love and care for. I don't want to be organizing photos of them on flags on people's lawns to honor them from COVID-20. So it's your turn. Do the right thing. I'm the face of COVID. My life is different now. I hope I get good news. I'll know in five weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. And I'm so sorry to hear of everything that you've had to endure during this pandemic. It's, as you point out, it's just unbelievable what can happen. So Sean, Sean Duratt would be next.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, my name is Sean Duratt, and I am a parent of a rising fifth grader at Deerfield Elementary. And I have another child who just graduated from sixth grade at DES. Andrea, thank you for being brave enough to share your story with this wider group. I also work as a teacher and a school administrator in Greenfield. And I'm here to speak up in support of the excellent DES educators and staff. I trust the professionalism, the work ethic, and the expertise of all of our DES teachers. And as a parent, I'm deeply concerned about employee morale if our teachers are not validated and respected as the experts in their field. I urge the school committee to do everything they can to listen to and support our teachers, whether the concerns are individual or collective through the union negotiation. Thank you for your time and for your service on the school committee.
Thank you, Sean. And I would also take this opportunity to thank you for the correspondence you have been sending in as well. So Aja, I think I pronounced it right this time. Aja Seron.
You did. Thanks. I'm Aja Seron, and I co-chair the CPAC. We wanted to start by thanking the administrators and principals for adjusting the reopening plans to follow both the CPAC's recommendations and the guidance put out by DESI on special education. The slower phased reopening with special education coming in first gives the most vulnerable students a chance to adjust to the new environment this fall. CPAC families are thankful for this consideration. We deeply appreciate your change of course to include more students in the high knees category as well and not just the substantially separate IEP students that was initially presented at the Sunderland meeting last week. Having adaptive PPE available to special education students and staff, along with the options for temporary shift to substantially separate classrooms, increases the safety for our needed students. Providing the proposed technology options will improve special education students' ability to access content in both models. The CPAC values the assurances that the district will be able to quickly remedy the backlog of IEP evaluations and annual meetings from last year, complete all of the upcoming annual meetings, and any amendment meetings that are requested this fall. In addition to providing IEP evaluations to students who are suspected of having new disabilities... In addition to providing IEP evaluations to students who are suspected of having new disabilities like anxiety or depression resulting from the pandemic. We are hopeful that the information provided in the past four school committee meetings will be compiled into a special education fact sheet and readily available to families as quickly as possible. Because as all CPAC parents know, nothing is guaranteed until we have it in writing. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Asia, and thank you to CPAC and all the concerned families in that organization for your, your vocal and, you know, well-intended feedback to us on our reopening plans. So I believe that is it for our public comment at this point in time. So with that being said, we will move to new business. The latest update on state guidance for community data metrics for COVID safe schools. And I believe Mr. Modesto.
Yes, sir. I'm going to have our nurse leader, Meg Burge, kind of give the overview of our matrix that we've been putting together. For those of you who were on other calls, you've probably seen this before. Not this committee, so here we go. I'm going to present her, her brief slideshow.
Hi there. So these are metrics that we have been working on. This presentation incorporates what has been provided to us from the state. And, you know, in later in the, in the presentation, I'll, I'll address this. But I want to just be clear that decisions were based on these data will be made by the Board of Health in consultation with the district and where appropriate with other local boards of health as we move. As, as, yeah, that's it. So I'm starting all of my presentations just with this sort of reminder because these really are the key components for health and safety for all of us in any setting that we're in. It really is masks when you're outside of the home, maintaining physical distancing, hand hygiene, and then staying home if you're unwell. I just, I like to start with those, that's it. In, in trying to, in, in working on our data metrics, those of you who've seen other discussions and our, on our draft protocols, these, these have changed. There are a lot of data out there and it seemed important to narrow down the data that we were going to rely on. Also make sure that that data were readily available and, you know, easily interpretable. So we have two sources, two dashboard points from the Department of Public Health, their weekly data and their daily data. And I'll talk more about what we pull from those sources. The New York Times has an interactive map. Each counts are county level data. And the Harvard Global Health Institute has an interactive dashboard as well. That has county level data, including counts that we can use to calculate some of our metrics. So the, these next two slides are kind of a snapshot of what the state released last Tuesday for their color-coded metrics. These are, these are based on average daily cases per hundred thousand. And that's a rolling average over fourteen days. These data are updated by the state every Wednesday and are shown on a map that is available in the weekly report and also lower down on that same page. And they've added an interactive piece to that map that you can hover over a town and get more details about the statistics for that town. As you can see, you know, they're, they're looking at anything greater than eight per hundred thousand. Four to eight, yellow, less than four is green. Their shaded part of the map is, it's a different statistic that they're presenting on the same map, which is fewer than five total cases over the past fourteen days. And they, that is relevant, and it is relevant for smaller communities with small populations and very few cases. Yeah, I'll leave it at that, next. I, I set my timer and I'm trying not to go down the rabbit holes that I can easily go down with this data. So I want to be clear that this slide is showing their recommendations, the guidance from DESI and the, and the command center. Or that greater than eight cases per hundred thousand would aid remote learning. Between four and eight would be hybrid or remote, remote if there were extenuating circumstances. And four, they say full in-person or hybrid. Again, hybrid would be extenuating circumstances, which they, they don't define, though they do refer to local boards of health, looking at other data, looking at trend data to make appropriate decisions. And, you know, I, I think that there's not been any discussion where we've been talking that I'm aware of this district of full remote. So that's, I unbolded them in my presentation because they're really not part of our discussion at this time. So when I was, when I was looking at the data that we had, when I was looking at the data that were available for the state, it seemed important to sort of rank them. The primary indicators are going to be ones that could trigger a fourteen day closure without question. Those are data by the Department of Public Health. It's statewide or regional data based on large numbers and fairly stable. Indicators, that's going to be local or regional data. It would, they would, they would likely trigger a short-term closure to allow the board of health, the district to do additional assessment and, and seek additional data. And the last category is, I, I named tertiary indicators. So those are things that would trigger, would trigger a level of concern. And so that would be a conversation with the local board of health, whether one town, the four towns, you know, likely, given our district. Also regional data. And it would again be an opportunity to sort of reassess and look at the whole picture to determine what's next. So specifically, the primary indicators are, we'd be looking at that DPH metric. Red, yellow, green. We would be looking at the seven day weighted average of positive tests. That's available in the daily dashboard. It's supposed to be updated by four each day. It's currently one point four percent for the and then we are waiting for DPH and DESI regional data. And I'm in a number of advocacy efforts as are many public health nurses and others who, to get regional data, so to get county level data, to get school district level data so that we could have aggregate data. The one color-coded metric is when you're looking at the, the population, you know, counts per hundred thousand population. They don't report numbers for towns below a certain population. And those numbers really are meant for larger municipalities. So, so we, we often don't get the data that those and, and we have small numbers, so it just makes it less stable. There's seventy thousand people in Franklin County, so calculate something for Deerfield is, is not, not, not so appropriate. Secondary indicators. So this is something we can calculate from the data reported in the weekly report. The confirmed COVID cases in the previous fourteen days. Looking at less than twenty five for the entire county, so the twenty six towns. And that would include data from settings that are really contain discrete congregate settings such as a skilled nursing facility, Franklin County, Dale. Schools, I would, would not be excluded from that count. Generally, certainly public schools, day schools would not be. Percent positive, less than three percent for Franklin County. We can calculate that again using the DPH data. Three percent is the recommendation, recommended threshold by the Harvard Global Health Institute. And seems for our, at a local level, more appropriate, given our population and our rural connected communities. And then doing a combined Franklin and Hampshire data, looking at less than ten cases per day or seventy cases per week per hundred thousand population, again excluding congregate settings. And that data, that, those numbers, threshold numbers are based on the Harvard Global Health Institute report. So the tertiary indicators that we're, we're wanting to work with or looking at trends. So, you know, are there, are there increasing trends in our primary or secondary data? You know, it's important to note that if we see, you know, if case numbers across the state are increasing, you know, it's, it's going to impact our decision. That trend will impact our decision and, and we wouldn't, I, I don't imagine wait to hit five percent if the trend is clearly headed that direction. Internal monitoring of data would be looking at illness dismissals within a building. One point nine percent of the expected census. And one point nine is the baseline for influenza-like illnesses for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty flu season for New England. Just, it's a way that public health data are, it's a measure to, to monitor an uptick in illnesses that are not necessarily diagnosed. So it's, it's a flag for us. And then also a greater than ten percent of the expected census any given day. And that would be staff and students if they're out, that that would be a flag that would would trigger a conversation and an assessment of other data. And then, you know, if we're hearing from the local board of health, either for Deerfield or surrounding towns, our district towns or other Franklin County towns that they're seeing increased positive test results in our area. That would be information that would, would definitely trigger a conversation and a assessment of the situation. And then the closure scenarios, these decisions are made by the local board of health. I want to acknowledge that we have board of health members on this call and I appreciate your taking the time, making the time to be here. So a long-term closure, you know, greater than fourteen days. That, that would be when there's widespread transmission in the community. The indicators remain above the threshold levels with no, no sort of flattening of the curve or decrease. A fourteen day district or building closure. That would be where we're seeing again community spread. We have concern for that there was an instance of in-school transmission. And then once the district closed, it would only reopen if the primary indicators were below the threshold and the board of health felt that the other measures were, they felt comfortable with what else they were seeing in terms of the data. And as much as we are able to, you know, from conversations with, with surrounding towns and and then the short-term closures, we're looking, would be sort of a one to three or a three to five day and that's, that's really to sort of basically put the brakes on and do a full assessment of the data, see what's happening. Get the information needed to make an appropriate decision about the next step, whether the school would reopen after that short-term closure or remain closed would be determined by the local board of health. They could decide to, to extend that closure for fourteen days or longer if the data indicated that was the appropriate safe decision to make for our communities. I almost got it under ten minutes, Darius.
Thanks, Meg.
You're muted, sir.
Sorry about, do we have any questions from committee members? Is there any of the numbers? I, I, I don't have any comments at this point in time, so.
I don't, I, I was just Trevor McDaniel. I, I just really wanted to thank Meg and, and everybody that she's been working with, all the local boards of health to try and come up with kind of really succinct plan on how we would look at closures or openings and all the indicators we'd be looking at. And it's, it's an immense amount of work that, that Meg and everybody's been doing to try and find, you know, the right mix of things to be looking at and following. And I just thank you so much for all that, all that work.
Okay, yes. Yes, Meg, thank you.
Thank you.
So. Next, we would have planning and scheduling for hybrid and remote models on the agenda.
Yeah, so that brings me back in. So basically you're, you're the, I think you're the last school committee to be unveiling of this. And so that, we're, we start going individual school committees, that's how information unfortunately gets kind of rolled out. Right now, basically now with the, I have trouble spitting this out every time probably because it's, you know, not news that I want to be sending out. I met with the administrative team really on Monday and basically we kind of mapped out the timelines in order to get things rolling. And I really need to, to slow down our slow rollout of the hybrid model. Basically, what I'm asking for is to move forward between two-week remote to start. The reasons behind that is, you know, there are several. The first one being there was concerns from the board of health starting in that particular week, following the Labor Day weekend. Really, we've seen the uptick after the last major holiday weekend and just open up schools on that particular weekend with all the other anxieties about opening up school. You know, I was asked if I could push it off a few days. On top of that, we've had, you know, I am negotiating with the union and also working on accommodations for staff members. And that process is taking longer to communicate out to what accommodations can be made. Staff members applying for different accommodations and working that.
We both lost for Meg, I had a long shot and I'm so grateful.
Took care of her. Thank you. So.
Hi, everyone, sorry about that.
So, so that being, you kind of brought some humor to it, thank you. So the, and basically, you know, trying to work those things out. We're also getting our buildings ready and, and working with different contractors and the timelines on that. There's a lot of different things having to come together perfectly at the right time. You know, me and myself as the leader of this district, I, you know, I put a timeline at the beginning of August that I thought we could make. I think I was being ambitious and going to the buffet line, you know, with, with big eyes that we could pull this off. There's just a lot of, a lot of factors, a lot of human factors as well where you can't just, you can't just get it done. You can't roll it out like we do every school year. And so that's, you know, my reason for a recommendation of, you know, slowing it down. I was going to have Kim jump on, just, I was going to present what the slowdown model looks like. And if you indulge with that and Kim will, we'll go through it rather quickly because I know it's getting. Now that was what I just showed, that just shows you how tired I am, let's not do that. Let's talk about the slowdown model here. All right, can we see that instead? No.
Not yet.
Guys, you know what, I've, you know, I've only done about twelve hours of school committee this week, so. If you think I'm joking, I'm not, all right. So here we are.
Thank you, Darius, do you mind just making, oh, it's perfect, I can see it perfectly.
There we go, I made it big already, there we go.
It's just perfect. So yes, Darius talked about slowing this down a little bit by a two-week period of time. And this is the draft schedule for this. So if you take a look at August twenty sixth, those in that pink color are the ten days that we're giving to the teachers for professional development. And there's a lot of different trainings going on that day. And there's events being made. So those are the first ten days that brings us to And there's events being made. So those are the first 10 days that brings us to September 9th. Then the official first day of school is on September 10th. And as Darius mentioned, given the holiday on Labor Day, it was recommended to us to do those first days in terms of remote orientations. So those two days in green will both be orientations for students and families to become used to the newness of our school. Then here's the week that Darius is really talking about. It's September 14th through the 18th. And those will be full remote days for most students. And we're asking our special program students and our high-needs students to start on those days in a half-day program. Down the center of the color, you're going to see this, the center of the calendar, you're going to see a purple blocks. Those Wednesdays will be remote days for all students for a half-day model. And in the afternoon, we'll have staff professional development. And as you can tell, and we've been talking a lot about it, there's a lot of professional development that needs to be done. That following week, it's, we're adding more of the vulnerable learners. So that's that kind of orangey salmon color there. So we're able to address the needs of the most vulnerable learners. And as you know, the definition for vulnerable learners is, is wider than just students and IEPs. And team and our staff are really looking at who's coming in on those days. Then on the 24th, we get to start that schedule that we originally planned for you. So that was that two-week time. And those, that's when we start Cohort A and Cohort B. In the beginning, we would like half the children in Cohort A to come in one day, half the children in Cohort B, and then the other half on the 28th and 29th. And to do that, we can really get to know the kids, re-meet, re-beet together, do the social-emotional check-in. We haven't seen these children in a long time, and a lot of things have happened. And we want to be able, so we can connect personally, to do our responsive classrooms, and just to really be there for each other. Then on that blue box, that October 1st, that's when we have that Cohort A, Cohort B back and forth. And those are colored blue, because as you know, we're trying to go from the half-day model to the full day based on the gates being open. So the calendar runs that way, all the way through, with every other day with Wednesdays off. And then, obviously, we heard a lot about the health indicators and when we can open the gates to, to make, help us make the decisions for that. So that's the main changes in the calendar. And the slowdown that includes both a remote start as well as increased opportunities for our special population students.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Darius?
Questions, any questions regarding that, that, you know, so basically, our timing, once, once we kind of release this, then we've had parents asking, you know, what's this mean? And what's the rollout of this? So basically, my, my rollout of this is to be, is presenting it to the school committees. We also sent it on to teachers yesterday. It is like we're creating the documentation as fast as we're, we're beating it out. You know what I mean? And just as you probably heard, you heard about maybe last night, when I got it ready for school committee for, that we met last night. Frontier is also doing the same thing, but they're doing a different kind of rollout. They have different parameters and that kind of thing, different, you know, students, that, that sort of thing. So that's the idea. Our game plan to communicate with parents is, is going to be, you know, we're working it through with teachers right now, kind of, kind of run it by school committee as well. And by early next week, getting those calendars out and additional informations to parents about, the following, you know, for this year coming up. So I do, you know, I know parents are anxious to get their schedules set. And I apologize, we're, we're going as fast as we can, you know, to schedule all these things. There's a lot of different moving parts, you know, and to get students back in the building and create a hybrid model, which is, you know, I've been, I've been pushing forward. We also have to create a remote model at the same time. So we're creating two teaching models at the same time. And, you know, without a whole lot of increase in staffing. So what's working with staff and to create those kind of things, it's complicated. And so, and it's a lot of work ahead of us there.
Well, I, I know that back when we took our vote, Darius, thank you. Continued thanks to you, your administrative team, to faculty and staff that are working hand-in-hand with you to develop these various models and plans. But I know that back when we took the vote in the joint committee meeting, or I'm sorry, in the individual committee meetings that were a joint committee meeting, that my concerns were that we are voting a plan that provides flexibility and the ability to pivot, the ability to adapt, but also recognize that we had three weeks of what was going to be incredibly intense work for you and your team to make plans for the opening. The fact that we're rolling back in concert with input from our LBOH as well as, you know, faculty, staff, administration, I, I think is a good thing. Certainly, with everything that will be going on at the end of August in Western Massachusetts, particularly in Deerfield, with three schools coming back into, into session, three independent schools coming back into session and bringing in borders from all over the country and all over the world. And in addition, bringing students in, day students in from Hampshire, Franklin, and Hamden and other counties, on into Vermont and New Hampshire, et cetera. Caution is, is the watchword as, as we move forward, very definitely. So I continue to thank you for your efforts. Anybody?
I would.
Trevor?
Yeah, I would just like to, to thank Darius too. I, I do, you know, I, I feel as a school committee, we should give Darius and the administration and faculty as much, you know, flexibility that they need, if they see the need to kind of roll this out a little slower. I know people are anxious to get back to school and they're, like, like Darius just said, they're, they're, the families are trying to plan, what are they going to do? But if, if, if it takes a few more days, a couple more weeks to make sure that he feels comfortable, that he can bring our, our kids back and our faculty back safely, and it gives the teachers more time for professional development and make sure that they feel comfortable teaching in this environment, and they, they feel safe. So I, I just think it, I'm, I'm totally in support of the calendar laid out here. I think, I know Carolyn had, had, you know, had also mentioned that, you know, after 4th of July, you could see a slight uptick in, as people go away on vacation or whatever, the end of the summer, everybody's coming back. I think that's really smart to just give a little bit of more cushion there for, for everybody to, to come back, get settled in and, and be ready to go back to school and just give a little bit of more cushion there for that. That, that seems smart to do. So I, I'm just, I'm in full support of this. It, it makes sense to me. So whatever, whatever he needs to get moving, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'd just like a little clarification on the, what would they, high-needs versus vulnerable learners. I see at the bottom, it has high-needs, listing a lot of different groups, including early learners, grades PK to five. How is that different from vulnerable learners? Is there a group at the elementary school level that is not considered a vulnerable learner at this point? Is, is sixth grade different? Is there? And I know you're still working on the details, but if there's any more input on that, I'd like to hear it.
The information on the bottom of the calendar, that's what's in DESI guidance. And it's copied verbatim, gives an idea of what they're determining as a vulnerable learner and special populations. And then each building is bringing it back to define it, to think about the kids and to do the programming for all the individuals that have found different kinds of difficulties. If it's access, if, of the curriculum, or other issues can all fall under that category. And it gives the principals and the staff at each school kind of a good wide net to capture those students that we have concerns about and want to support in the best way that we can.
And then the last part, Carrie, if you may, I know, regarding pre-K. Pre-K, you know, public schools are only required to provide public education to, to pre-K for those with special needs. So while we have a mixture in ours, so when you're talking about they are considered a vulnerable group, because through the public school model, we're, you know, pre-K is, is set that way. So they're looking at them as a vulnerable group.
Anyone else have anything to say? I.
I haven't, sorry, can't.
Oh.
So if we're looking at vulnerable learners going through October, we're thinking there'll be a group at DES that will not be starting until after that? Is that correct? There will be a group at DES starting during that vulnerable learning time, Carrie? Is that what you're asking? No, I mean, are there kids who are not considered vulnerable learners, who will not be starting until November or later? How is it?
No, no, the, the, no. When we, when we start, yeah, those cohorts that we're talking about, bringing back are all students, broken down into smaller groups to roll out those days. And in understanding rolling out those days, there's, you know, we got new patterns. We had new student patterns. And the reason why we're doing smaller groups is we got to figure out all the different kind of things. We're kind of creating a new school in a way, in the sense of how we're doing business. And so we gotta, if we start working a smaller group, I think teachers are going to be far more comfortable and then troubleshooting those. And that's the other reason why they're half-days, because they need second half-day to troubleshoot how we're doing, you know, basic safety procedures and classes with, you know, the six-foot spacing and, and, you know, how we're doing from mask breaks to, you know, you know, activity times and those kind of things. A lot more thought has to go in there, so we're creating more time within that. So that's the, I know that there's a frustrating side. I know parents have to be frustrated at, you know, the slower rollout, but that's, that's the, that's the logic behind it.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Certainly, Darius, you just touched on, oh, go ahead, David. I see you're unmuted, David. Were you going to speak or?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. You know, it's, it's been a, it's been a long summer. It's been a frustrating summer for everyone involved. You know, we've seen a degree of divisiveness within the DES community, the Union 38, frontier regional communities, that is not something that we're used to. And I think, or, you know, I'm, I'm appreciative of all of the input we've received. My decisions, and, you know, I can only speak for myself, but the way I approach the decision-making is a balance between the professional opinions provided by our staff, faculty and staff, the professional opinions provided by our administrators and state health leaders and local boards of health. It's a, also a consideration of the needs of the Deerfield community, the needs that are met by our educators, educators, by the elementary school, by our school systems, in helping this community function. It also looks at the families and the impacts that this horrible pandemic has had on all of us. And how, how we can move forward. So I continue to support the hybrid plan. I'm pleased that the three weeks has led not, you know, has led to a more gradual rollout. It gives us an opportunity to do some remote early on, to see what's, how that's going. It gives us the ability to, you know, phase in reoccupation of the school. It gives our faculty and staff opportunities to work with small groups of children. And particularly, you know, some, some of the more challenging population in establishing new safety protocols and, and new standards and practices within the schools. So I'm encouraged. I know it's got to be frustrating for parents at home, especially single, you know, single fam, single head of households, dual working families, you know, childcare logistics. I know it's frustrating. We're trying to work through it. I know Darius and his team are trying to make things as workable as possible for everyone involved. And I hope that this community can come together now and work to see this through safely for everyone involved. So, thank you. That takes, does that take us through planning and scheduling for hybrid and remote models? We're down now to, go ahead.
I guess, I guess one more question, just to clear up. When we get out to October 1st and, and on, and into October, we have, you know, Cohort B goes for a full day. Say, you know, I'll take the week of the 19th. So Cohort A goes for a full day on Monday. Tuesday, Cohort B goes. Then, then there's the remote day, early, you know, remote day on Wednesday. And then we go A and B again. On the days that Cohort A is not being educated, will they be doing remote on the following day? So the 20th, so Cohort A on the 20th, are they working remotely? Or are they not being, doing education today?
Excellent question, Trevor. So in this phase, students are in the building two days a week and receiving remote education three days a week. So students will always be active and involved in the curriculum that we've built in, either in person or through the remote channels.
That's what I was hoping to hear. Thank you. That's great.
One other question occurs to me coming out of this. Faculty and staff that are high-risk, you know, and I think particularly of that, you know, the, Andrea Callahan's statement and, you know, recitation of what she's gone through since February and March. Is there provision within this that they are working remotely in some capacity, or able to work remotely in some capacity to, to fulfill their obligations? Or what, I, I'm just, from a staffing perspective, wondering what, what's out there, so.
Yep. So, yeah, so staff members can apply for several different types of leave. We, Shelley put on a presentation earlier this week to, staff members could come on to understand the different types of leaves that are open to them, from, from the, from ADA leave to a FF-CRA leave, to an extended, an extended family. All the acronyms, I'm, it's getting late. But so basically, kind of explaining with those things out. We didn't ask people to apply if they didn't think they had the documentation, because we wanted to know what we had to work with there and what kind of accommodations we can do, whether the accommodations are remote, whether, there's also childcare issues that we're working through. You know, we have a lot of members with, with children who also, we have children and who may be attending our district or neighboring district that no longer is open as well. So we have our own, you know, it's kind of in and on itself. You have, you know, we have parents in our own district who can't provide childcare and go to work and are also teachers. And so kind of, you can see how that is, the multiplication of those issues. And as those issues, that's one of the reasons, again, the overwhelm that my administration has done, has had, is those things are coming in, we're trying to figure out how are we going to deliver the education in the hybrid model. And we're really looking at, you know, doing a lot of team kind of, you know, approaches on that. You know, because we may have some teachers that are teaching remotely. Just because you're teaching remotely doesn't mean they're only teaching remote students. They could actually be popping into the classroom remotely to give a lesson with support from other adults in the classroom. So, you know, we do have some, you know, we have, you know, again, a master teacher who's can, can work those kind of things out. Because you got to remember that there, you know, the student, right now, the way the schedule's set is the student is in, is in the building two days a week and out, teaching remotely three days a week. So there's a lot of remote teaching that's happening in this model, you know, the way we have it set up. So it's two-thirds of their, of their education is still remote. So remote is really the emphasis. And then the getting of the people in the, in the building in person is the follow-up, is the connecting of the details, is the social-emotional, and trying to move on that remote learning. So. That kind of answer?
Thank you. So. Any, anything else out there? Okay. So CPAC concerns and questions, new business.
Darius, you want me to just?
Sorry, I was, I was, there was someone making noise. I muted them. Yeah, so. Sorry, I was, I was, there was someone making noise and I muted them. Um, yeah, so, uh, Aaron Baron, you know, Director of Special Education is going to talk a little bit about some of CPAC's, um, you know, questions and just kind of general overview of what's happening this, this fall.
And I want to acknowledge, um, Asia coming on as the co-chair of the CPAC earlier. Um, and the fact that this got on the agenda based upon, uh, a letter, uh, with, uh, concerns about, uh, the special education plan, uh, that was sent to school committee over a week ago. Um, and we started to address that at the Sunderland School Committee and through all these school committee meetings, um, in which we're all in, I think there's just sort of ongoing communication. Um, and so there really has been sort of a change of, a, a change of focus or it continued conversation through various school committee meetings. Uh, because it seems to be the forum, we're all in lately. Um, and I just wanted to note what you said, Ken, about, um, the appreciation of input. And I think that's where I'm going to. And um, how in this time it's so stressful that it's, it's easy to go to a place where it's divisive. Um, but really, and to just recognize that we're all allies here. Um, and we're all working together to a common goal and that all the input that's given and all the communication that's given, uh, it's just remarkable at the level of communication that's going on. And so I want to recognize the original letter uh, that was sent to the CPAC a week ago that got this onto, uh, today's agenda, but also the ongoing communication by so many parties um, and so many moving parts. Um, so the original, the, the concern that was, was expressed that was about special education planning. Uh, with the idea that, you know, the hybrid model was coming out and the remote model was coming out, but what we were doing for special education. And what I've said since Sunderland, and I know, uh, Asia and Holly and others have been known, five school committee, uh, listening to this, and we've kind of, uh, toned, um, uh, uh, what we're doing. And that's why her orig- her letter earlier this morning or her, ah, I'm tired. Her letter earlier, uh, in this meeting. Uh, so some of the things that I just want to note that we're doing is ongoing, uh, communication. Uh, and understanding that special education is a supplemental service. Uh, so special education students are general education students. So it was very important, as hard as it is to imagine, it was very important for us to have this model. Uh, that we've had for a while now of the hybrid and the remote models and working to design those supplemental models, supplemental forms of service. Uh, and then there was the question of how we were defining the high need students. Um, and that got a little complicated, maybe it was some of the things that I said, um, at Sunderland and identifying that our schools are so inclusive that many of the school districts around us are identifying, uh, students high needs of those that are in substantially separate programming. That means out of the general education environment over sixty percent of the time. Uh, but we are really noting that a lot of our students that would have been in special education, specialized programs or out of the general ed population are actually included. Uh, so we can't just, we're not just going to make a blanket statement that our high needs kids are uh, just those kids in substantially separate programs. So, uh, administrators, principals, Tina, Elaine, uh, faculty have all been discussing it, um, and working with faculty and really looking at who are those high need students. Um, and then we will be reaching out to families. I know, um, I'm looking at Tina's picture there. Um, already been reaching out to families to get their input, to find out what changes, if anything's occurred, if there's been heightened anxiety or stress in the families, to find out what's new in those families and to take that into consideration. We will then, uh, put together a document after our faculty have time to talk about how and when those services will be provided. We'll be providing parents with a separate document to the IEP of exactly how and when the services and IEPs will be delivered. Um, again, that wouldn't be a change in the IEP unless through our conversation with parents or for knowledge from the faculty, uh, that there's been such a significant change in student need, it warrants a change in the IEP, in which case we would hold IEP meetings. But what this all comes down to is a lot of communication, um, a lot of input from many different parties, uh, continued communication. And, uh, it's very exciting, um, and stressful and tiring. Um, and one of the things that I'd like to just share as we move forward is we are all allies in this. And if we understand that we'd be coming from different directions or maybe have our different priorities or different input that we want to give, uh, moving forward, if we just all assume good intent uh, and share our input and our communication in ways, um, we can continue to just build uh, a district in which we have an expansive and strong continuum of services for all students. Um, so I thank, uh, the CPAC for their ongoing communication to faculty, administrative, school committee for your work. Uh, and if you have any specific questions about special education, um, and what we're doing, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Any questions from the committee? I guess not. Um, are we moving to executive session, Darius, this evening?
If you'd like an update on negotiations, you are.
I think I can see most everybody in terms of committee members. Are we interested in an update? Mr. Sharp and Carrie and Mary and Trevor?
Sure.
Yes. Yeah, I would be.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so for the general community, we are going to be entering executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Three, uh, to discuss strategy with, with respect to collective bargaining, teachers and instructional assistance. Um, this will be a separate closed meeting. When we reconvene, we will be reconvening to take no actions, only to adjourn our general meeting. Um, I want to thank all the public and attendees this evening for listening in and hearing all that's going on with our s- school community. I, I'm going to take one, one more moment to, uh, to get on a podium, I guess, and, and just say a couple of things about community or continue to say things about community. Uh, as we've gone through this process, it's, we've had, you know, powerful emotional stories and, um, happenings described by people such as Andrea Callahan this evening and earlier people. I, I can only say from, you know, from my perspective, our community, our school community really, you know, reaches out to provide support wherever we can. We're sorry to hear of these things. I, I, you know, I have family who have had COVID nineteen. I have a daughter who is a teacher who's wrestling with all of the issues that our faculty and staff are wrestling with. Um, I, I fully get it. Um, and I just, I, you know, as Karen said, I, I hope that our community can now start to build, build back and remove some of the divisiveness and, and continue to work together at, on this issue. And, uh, we hope that the world and the nation as well move forward and we get to get our arms around this thing as quickly as possible. So sorry to get back on a podium for a while, but, um, I will now entertain a motion unless someone else has comments. Absolutely.
Could I interrupt you for a second?
Um, this is Greg Francesi.
Francesi.
Franceski, sorry.
I am, um, I am, um, I thank all of you for what you're going through. I can't imagine how stressful it must be. I think that everybody in the community is really stressed out and anxious about this. And I just want to say something. And I also want to thank you for, you know, really reminding everybody to and listen to each other. All right. Um, we, we all have our opinions and I think that, um, mine are very emotional. I have a son who's in school and, um, worried, you know, I don't want him not to be in school. I don't want him to have a different education than all the other kids. Or all the other kids in his class, but if you would consider, you know, just for a moment, a little exercise with me in the part of yourselves that realizes the absurdity of, of this situation. The world is seven point eight billion people. Seven hundred eighty-three thousand people that have died. Hundred seventy-five thousand people have died now in the United States. Our population is three hundred and eighty-two million. Seven point eight billion people, seven hundred eighty-three thousand. Three hundred eighty-two million. We're, we're doing something wrong. And I feel like we're following leadership that doesn't make sense. And ignoring our basic emotional intuitive understanding of the reality that not about to see any of our friends, teachers, pilgrims, or anyone hurt. That doesn't have to be. Who, who dies from this? Without having contact, without having everyone entering the building tested before they go into the building, we don't know who's bringing what into the building. So we're basically putting everyone into a Petri dish instead of keeping them safe in their homes and letting them survive the emotional trauma that it will cause them to be at home with their families or with support people, you know, compared to the emotional trauma of losing a parent or losing your, you know, a family member or friend. And I just feel like, you know, we're all on the same page in that concern, but we're forgetting that whoever's coming up with all the statistics about, you know, five percent and this and that, it's people. It's not, it's not percentage points. We're all, you know, on the same page with that, I think. So I want, I hope that you'll reconsider and give the teachers a chance to prepare to teach the kids remotely. They're going to need a lot of time and, and training in the next few weeks to be able to pull it off. Otherwise, it's going to be a big mess, just like it was in the spring. And you're going to lose kids. Because they're not going to be able to hold their attention because it's a very challenging thing to suddenly go from teaching a class full of kids that can ask you questions and interact with you and get encouraged in a very personal way to doing it through a computer. But there's, there've got to be, you know, there are obviously people who are doing, going to do it remotely. There are experts in our community who teach remotely already that we could learn from. And I just feel like we should be putting our hundred percent effort into trying to do a really good job of remote learning. And then, you know, in November or December, once things have hopefully improved in the, in the country as a whole and, you know, stayed stable in our area, we, you know, go back.
All right.
All I have to say.
Okay. Well, thank you, Greg. So.
You're welcome.
Executive, uh, with that said, uh, I will entertain the motion to enter executive session pursuant to End Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, teachers and instructional assistants. I'll make a motion or so moved? David?
I'll second, Trevor.
And we'll go to a roll call vote. And, um, David Sharp?
Yes.
Carrie Echols?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Trevor McDaniel?
Yes.
And Kenneth Cudaback, yes. At eight thirty-one PM, we are entering executive session. As indicated, this public meeting will reconvene only to adjourn when we're done with our executive session. So thank you all for attending.